Michael, are you outside?
Yes, I am.
That's bad. Judy, can you do the invocation?
I will when you get ready.
Mr. Banks is going to be a little bit late. Well, folks, it's 6 o'clock, May 14th, 2020. This meeting is in session. Let's start with the invocation. Commissioner West?
Alrighty, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, here we go. Dear heavenly Father, as we conduct this meeting, please help all of our city people who are involved as we make the right decision in this troubled time. Please bless each person as we go about the business of tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, if you guys would not say the pledge because of time delay, it really sounds awful. So I will read the, or read, I will state the Pledge of Allegiance. We have the flag up, thank you, Deb. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. I don't think we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda at this time. Michael?
How do we raise our hand?
There's a button there.
Mine used to have it, and it does not have it. It only has share screen, participants, stop video, and mute.
Oh. Well, I'll tell you what, let's do it the old-fashioned way, you raise your hand.
Okay.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, I have some questions about the agenda. It's kind of a new format, I don't really see old business. There are some.
What kind of, they, I don't know why I'm down here.
So, there are a couple of items, you know, that I think we kind of need to discuss, but I don't know where they fall.
Number seven?
What is number seven? That's a group, well, no, that, well, that would not be for.
It'll be number nine.
Subject matter items, general business. So anything else we have to say on a substantive topic? Because one thing I don't see on here, but it's time-sensitive. We did discuss it at a prior meeting, and we've received a public comment on it, I think. Because it was forwarded to me by the person who made the comment. And I think to all of you is the Main Street program, whether or not we want to apply for it. Should that go under general business?
Commissioner, one of the items that I'm going to talk about is that Main Street program.
Okay, so maybe if there are general business items, they should fall under the city manager's reports?
They can, I don't know why I'm getting feedback. We're going to read, we're going to read public comment. So you'll be able, we'll read the public.
Right, but I'm, we discussed this at a prior meeting, it's, I'm not really responding to the public comment. I'm, as much as I am, the fact that we brought it up, we had a brief discussion. And it seems to be time-sensitive, so I'm suggesting that we add it to the agenda as something that we discuss that's a possible action item. I'm just not sure.
No objection.
Put it, okay, so I'll put Main Street here.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
All right, announcements from the chair. Couple things, one of them was I met with, actually I talked to him on the phone, and the city manager met with him, and that's Doc Bailey. You remember him with the seaplanes? He's still interested in doing something with that. Also, he's interested in maybe moving a light industry thing, where assembly of aircraft parts here in town, and I told him about the Ice House behind Save-A-Lot. I don't know if that would meet his needs, but that was the only place I could think of that would be available. And, Michael, if you could, you actually, my back was bad, and you actually were able to spend some time with him. Was it yesterday?
I did. Mr. Bailey talked about, we talked for a few minutes, maybe a minute or two, about the fly-in, where he has a seaplane. The majority of the time was talking about he wants to bring a new Kansas City barbecue place to Crescent City. So I said, we don't have any barbecue places, you have no competition. That wouldn't be a problem, and he talked about manufacturing, he didn't talk about seaplane manufacturing, he talked about manufacturing barbecue smokers. That's, he said that's his bread and butter. So that's what he's going to be looking to, he's got a two-to-three-year time frame on a lot of the projects. So I said, come to me, come to the city with a plan, we'll talk about it more, see what you want to do, where it fits, things like that. He said there was no ask from the city, so.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds, you know, bring it, we'll take a look at it. And we'll go from there. Did you take him by the Ice House, by the way, or did you get him by there?
We didn't go by it, and once again, I thought it was going to be manufacturing. Like you said, it was, my impression was it was going to be about seaplane parts, and then it was really about barbecue smokers, so he wanted to take a look, and he has some gentleman moving. Scope that out.
All right, we'll go with that.
One question about that?
Please.
So, his, Doc Bailey's presentation to the commission before was about constructing a seaplane basin here? So is that something that he is proposing to do?
We did not, we did not talk about that in our meeting.
Okay, because if, I mean, if that's something that he wants to bring up, I would think we would want to have a community workshop on it.
Absolutely.
If he's not bringing it up, that's fine with me.
Correct, he talked about a landing strip on Bear Island, but, and he was working with the owner of that, so that he wasn't talking about any kind of basin here, so it might come up later, we don't know.
All right.
Okay, if we can move on, the other item, the only other item was, I've been asked about, and that is the status of Commissioner Berg, Katie Berg. And, as you know, on the April 8th, the governor, DeSantis, and his staff came down and suspended her status as a commissioner here in the city. So that's the status that I know of, and nothing has changed since then.
That is correct, that is from the governor's office, he's an executive, and her status is suspended from all duties right now. There's been no change, and I have not heard anything.
There was also questions in the the what is it, our city charter? And that after three absences, we could consider, you know, whether someone is absent or not. And it was the opinion of council that the governor's determination stood, and that's, you know, that's the way we're going to do it, so until that changes from the governor, that's what we're going to go with. Any other comments on that issue? All right, moving on, recognition, proclamations, and presentations, we have a present, a proclamation, rather, for the national law. If everyone can mute. City of Crescent City proclamation, number 20-04, National Law Enforcement Week. Whereas the week of May 10th, 2020, through May 16th, 2020, has been designated as National Law Enforcement Week. And whereas Putnam County has dedicated law enforcement men and women serving our county under difficult, stressful, and often dangerous circumstances. And whereas law enforcement officers are our guardians of life and property, defenders of the individual's rights to be free, warriors of the war against crime, and dedicated to the preservation of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas Florida and the municipalities within, Putnam County desires to honor the valor, service, and dedication of its own law enforcement officers comprised of municipal, county, and state law enforcement agencies. Now therefore be recognized and proclaimed by the City of Crescent City Commission that this week, or the week, rather, of May 10th, 2020, through May 16th, 2020, is recognized as National Law Enforcement Week. Be it further proclaimed, that the citizens of city, of the City of Crescent City are urged to show their support and appreciation of our law enforcement officers who give their lives to protect and serve their communities. And witness hereof, I here to set my hand and cause the seal of the Crescent City, of the City of Crescent City be affixed this 14th day of May, 2020.
And actually tomorrow is the, the. It goes along with that proclamation, Mayor?
What goes along with it?
The governor had sent random to us about having the flags at half-staff in honor of Peace Officers Memorial Day, that is tomorrow. So from sunrise to sunset, we will have any flag and half-mast.
I was not aware of that, but that's, that's a great tribute to our law enforcement, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Tomorrow is actually today.
Okay, gotcha. Public comment, any public comment received will be read at this time. Deb? You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have several emails, the first is from Bridget Stevenson. And her subject is question for the commissioners' meeting. It reads, I saw a news report that one of the Crescent City Commissioners, Katie Berg, was arrested and charged with exploitation of $50,000 or more from an elderly person or disabled adult, and that she used this money for herself. What are your comments about this? Has she been removed from office? Have you checked to be sure she hasn't taken any Crescent City money? Thank you. Shall I read them all first?
Can we address that one?
No, I don't think we have any comment.
Well, I think it's important to address the part about Crescent City money, because I saw that in the newspaper as well. And we, you know, we have financial controls. At some point, I think we need to say something to the public about our financial controls and how that, that's really not a concern. I mean, from our end.
Thank you.
I don't believe she could get into the money without the help of someone else, so I don't believe that's happened.
All right, go ahead and read the next one there, Deb.
Thank you, the next one is from Richard Booher. His subject is Crescent City Main Street residents paying the price for non-enforcement. It reads, city commission members, I am a resident on South Main here in Crescent City. My wife and I love this town, it is a small hidden gem. Unfortunately, our quality of life, as well as our neighbors, is constantly degraded by the open disregard of some of those driving our neighborhood streets, in our case, South Main Street. This is not a nuisance or an irregular occurrence. It is many times every day and night, reckless speeds, ignoring of stop signs, loud, obnoxious, and vulgar music, laced with racial slurs and profanity. We have three police officers in our family, all of which, along with common sense, tell us this is easily handled, yet the city is unwilling or unable to protect our neighborhood and would apparently rather subject its law-abiding citizens to being endangered and unprotected, which will lead to more problems as many of us start to feel the need to do for ourselves what law enforcement should have done long ago. Much of the reason for these problems also has to do large gatherings and activities under the big tree on North Main, 200 yards from the police station. It too goes blissfully ignored, as we are told what to think rather than what we know. I want to emphasize our family's gratitude for living in such an otherwise wonderful place. We respect and appreciate our officers and those in position of authority. We, along with many of our neighbors, just don't understand why nothing is being done to protect our neighborhood. Many of us have spoken, none have been heard. Sincerely, Richard Brewer, 22, South Main. Shall I read the next?
I'll go visit him. What was his, his name again, Richard?
Booher, B-O-O-H-E-R.
Okay.
Right, and Mayor, I think this is something, I think this is something we need to talk about on the agenda, because it's not just Mr. Boers, and I've seen it myself. Things are getting ugly.
If we hold that particular issue with the police report?
Mayor, I need a brief timeout. One moment, we have to let Commissioner Banks in.
All right.
That's important. Poor Harry. What's that sound, someone's knocking at the door?
Thank you, Commissioner Banks has arrived, he will be joining Finance Director while we conclude the public comments.
Please continue, Deb.
Hey, let's do this.
There we go. The next is from Cynthia Burton, it is public comment from meeting held May 14th, 2020. Cynthia Burton, address 109 North Prospect Street. And this is a question. Some neighbors have complained about a strong bleach smell, and others have complained about foul-smelling, yellow, discolored water coming out of their taps. This was an issue late last summer, when the aerator was not working, so we were told. And it seems the problem has resurfaced. What is going on with the water system again? Okay, the next is from Cynthia Burton, 109 North Prospect Street. There is a significant problem with our water pressure at 109 North Prospect Street. I finally had the opportunity to discuss this with one of the city employees, who explained that the delivery pipe for North Prospect is only one and a half inches in diameter. He also explained that the pipe feeding South Prospect is eight inches in diameter. Furthermore, the one and a half-inch water pipe is exposed on city property. I don't feel this should be allowed. Also, there has been ongoing work on Florida Avenue near Park that remains uncompleted, with one pipe sticking out of the ground, and another corner with a hole and cones around it. Does the city have a schedule in place to finish the progress, the project already in progress? Does the city have a strategic plan in place to upgrade the water infrastructure so every citizen of Crescent City can have enough water pressure to do dishes and have another household member take a shower at the same time? After all, we are all paying the same price for water, but we are not getting the same service.
Okay, can I address both of those comments?
Please.
I'm going to talk about water quality. Right now, they are, let's talk about the water quality and chlorine. Right now, they've been working for this past several weeks, I'm working on the aerator, the actual ground storage tank, I'm pointing over there at Sunrise Park, which means that we have to manually upload water and get it from our water tower in the north, and, which means the aerator takes care of the sulfur in the water. Well, when that's not running, we've got to elevate chlorine levels to take care of that, so it doesn't smell like a bad sulfur smell or taste in the water. That's going to continue probably for another week, and then it should subside as we go forward. They handle the project that she's talking about, or they're talking about on the street. I talked to Public Works Director, they are ordering parts, they've been trying to wait to get them in, and they will be finishing up that project real soon, I'm hoping the next couple of weeks. He, as far as a master plan, we are looking to, we are in the final round of grants. Right now, we have a grant, CDBG, at Harry Banks Park, and we cannot apply until we finalize that one. So the next round that we're available is probably the fall, and we're looking to put that now. And I've talked with Public Works about getting a master list of priorities of how we want to upgrade our system, whether it's water or wastewater.
Yeah, I know they've already been working maybe two weeks on that water tank.
Correct.
Okay, and I know that north of, it's still in the city, where that lot is, the old hotel, north of town, what is that, Sicily's and the old hotel, that water pressure's not good there. But I didn't know it was bad on Prospect Street, an inch-and-a-half line, that is, and it probably has some corrosion in it, too.
Some places they have inch-and-a-half, Mayor. We like to upgrade everywhere, and the other problem is the system is very old, and we have, we sometimes have problems locating them. I know there are some of them, you could probably scratch the ground and get a, and then get a pipe, and then other places, they might be really deep, and we're not exactly sure. So that's another issue with location of where these, where the lines go. A lot of times, they have to work on them wet, they can't just shut them off, they might have old valves. So it's been case by case, and especially with this project.
Okay, I mean, I assume there's a standard of water pressure that, industry standard that you should have, at least to the, to the meter.
Right, and we'll talk about that, and we'll address that at the next meeting. I'm going to get some more information, because it just came up about the public comment about them, that person having low pressure there.
Okay. It's probably not the only one. Yes, Commissioner DeVito?
DeVito, I, listening to this, I have a suggestion. I didn't know there was an ongoing issue of repairs and the aerator and all that. It might be a good idea for the city to try to give residents a heads-up when there's going to be a project like this, so they won't have to, you know, worry and wonder and know how long it's going to be going on. It just seems like this would be a good thing to be proactive about, and.
I agree.
Get the word out, so, because.
This wasn't a maintenance, it was, we get annual maintenance on our tanks and the water towers, and when they got in there, they found out they needed to do a little more work. So, and that's one thing we'll fix, when I want to talk about our, you know, city website, and getting the information out there timely.
Right, but I mean, for example, we can tell the newspaper, we can put it on social media, because I just hate for people to worry that they don't know what's going on, and they're worried about their water, and, you know, people, just some way, people need to know, whether it's, even if it can't be weeks in advance, if a problem comes up, my water looks okay, but I would be very upset if what was coming out of the tap did not seem right. So, just a suggestion. Okay.
Michael?
I think that was it on that subject.
Deb, you have more letters to read? Unmute yourself, Deb.
Sorry about that. The next is from Tracy Eckhart. Subject is ongoing public nuisances and noise in the city. She lives at 109 North Prospect Street. This reads, ongoing public nuisances and noise in the city. I regularly call the Putnam County Sheriff's Office to report nuisance activity at one of three locations. The Parker House parking lot, the Main Street tree, and now the worst nuisance spot is Cedar Street between Florida and Eucalyptus, the Jethro Church property. Last Friday, there was an ongoing nuisance on Cedar Street where I witnessed about 20 cars, some parked blocking the street, where people were engaged in party-like behavior of open containers, pot-filled air, and the appearance of drug purchasing. I did go to see this because I could hear the noise from early evening, and it continued for hours. I could hear it four blocks away over my TV, so when I was ready to go to bed, I first drove over to see it in order to give the sheriff the correct address-location. I also informed Brett Peterson and Lisa DeVito. On April 10th, I emailed all commissioners, mayor, city manager, and police chief concerns about noise late at night. I received a phone call from Brett Peterson and Lisa DeVito, and would like to thank them both for acknowledging my message. I understand that there are strict state guidelines concerning measuring noise, but other cities throughout the state have voted on city ordinances that condemn nuisance behavior that goes along with the noise problem issuing fines. I propose you address these nuisance concerns immediately, as they are a detriment to our way of life here, and I will certainly not assist in, and will certainly not assist in attracting desirable residents and businesses. Suggestions I have are, one, immediately updating code enforcement policy for nuisance activity, fining offenders. Number two, especially on Friday and Saturday nights, local police officer on duty, focus on these areas of concern. Number three, make an ordinance that the drive-up alcohol window be closed by 8:00 PM. That's the end of that.
Did I see you raise your hand, Harry?
Yes.
Commissioner Banks, please, you've got the floor.
I didn't get that email, what she said she mailed to you and Commissioner DeVito.
I'm not sure I got the email either, actually.
Shouldn't all the commissioners get that?
She sent it to me also.
Well.
Well, I think all, I think all the commissioners should get it.
Yeah, I had gotten a couple of phone calls, and that one night she talked about, I, was it the 10th? I drove over there, and it was Edgewood and Eucalyptus or something. It was a parking lot, literally, cars were parked, you couldn't, I mean, I had a golf cart, I drove on the grass and got around. Cars were parked, it was a parking lot. And I called dispatch, and I went like a block away to be out of the way, and Tim came, he was on duty. He was there within five, seven minutes, he was there. I think he, when I came down there, he had a car pulled over on Myrtle. But anyway, he got there pretty quick, they were gone, he seems to think that they have a scanner. Anyone else have any comment on that?
Just, I have one brief comment about Harry's question. I think the very first email that I got didn't seem to go through the city. I think it went to us individually, and it looked like all commissioners were addressed. But obviously, if someone types in your address incorrectly, then, you know, you're not going to get it, that could be what it is. And I did, after we got that first email from Tracy Eckhart, I did send an email memo to the city manager suggesting that we, that really staff need to get together and see what ordinances we have that address it, and what's lacking. And give us a report on that, because obviously. Because obviously, as Ms. Eckhart points out, we are not able to keep the peace at this point. So.
We, and we had talked about that and we can let legal and chief talk about it. I believe this has been brought up before.
Yes, we all know.
It has discussions about this before prior commission meetings?
That was the subject of my memo. There's been endless discussion at commission meetings. So my conclusion is we need a staff report in writing with an evaluation of what the problem is, what tools we have in terms of our ordinances and staff to address it, and what we're lacking and what else we can do. Ms. Eckhart is suggesting that we, you know, address nuisance activity through an ordinance. Perhaps other cities have something that we can follow, but we have, I think I said this, we've addressed this over and over and then the same complaints keep coming and we don't seem to have a good way to really resolve it. So.
And the party just moves from space to space and this is something we've had for many, many, many years.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Shall I continue with the next?
Yes, ma'am. I, I thought that was it. Go ahead.
No, sir, we have quite a few more.
Okay.
The next would be Tracy Eckhart regarding medians. Tracy Eckhart, 109 North Prospect Street. When driving into Crescent City on Highway 17 from either the north or the south, one is greeted with attractive welcome signs. However, the first sight upon entering the city are the overgrown unattended medians. FDOT has a contract and pays our city over $17,000 annually to care for these medians. Why are the medians not being taken care of? Where is this money being directed? Isn't it fraudulent on the part of the city to bill FDOT for a service that is not rendered? That concludes that email.
Well, she's, she has issues there. One is the median strips and the care for those maintenance of it. And the other is the funds and whether they're being used properly. And I have, I'm sure they are being used properly. I'm sure that that is a line item and used for, for those maintenance of that. Michael, do you want to speak on that?
I, I do. I spoke with DOT. I didn't know there was an issue when I got here. I've spoken with DOT several times. We do have, we do get reimbursed funds. Well, actually, we do get funds every quarter for the maintenance there. We do, as I found out, we have an issue with irrigation in the medians. We have 11 medians that need to be cared for constantly. We just can't mow them. When I talk to DOT, their answer is they just don't want to see grass out there. And then we have other issues with actual safety because they have stringent MOT guidelines, the maintenance of traffic, putting cones and things like that. So my, my plan, I talked internally about it. I talked to Public Works about it. One, we have to solve the irrigation issue. And the second is, we can use those funds and big picture plan is trying to get a contractor possibly to, to go out to bid, to get a contractor to take care of the medians, the landscaping. And we also have issues with tree limbs where they come over 17 and it can be a hazard to vehicles. So that's one of the things I'm working on right now.
Okay, so you've perhaps have a contract go out for bid?
Correct.
Just contract that whole thing up?
The next meeting about, about that.
Okay. Any other comment on that particular letter? All right, Deb, please.
Okay, the next comes from Michelle Myers, 304 South Prospect Street regarding the Florida Main Street program. And it reads, at the last city commission meeting, I discussed the possibility of Crescent City becoming a participant in the Florida Main Street program. At that time, the governor's stay-at-home order had not been enacted and the program coordinator offered to present to the commission the benefits of this program. The commission showed interest and asked me to work with city manager Michael Esposito. The following week, I met with Mr. Esposito and he told me he needed to research this program before committing to setting up a meeting with the coordinator, the commission, and citizens to discuss this program and the benefits it could offer Crescent City. That was approximately two months ago. The program coordinator recently notified me that the 2020 application is being released in June with the deadline to apply being September. Only three apprentice communities will be selected. They are anticipating this year's application pool to be larger than usual due to so many communities hoping to gain assistance restarting their economy. The program coordinator also indicated she has not been contacted by our city manager and was not sure if we were still considering this for our community. I was disappointed that Mr. Esposito had not contacted her as several things need to happen before we can apply, so timing is important. I believe it is worthy of the commission's attention and hope you agree. If Mr. Esposito is unable to coordinate this, I am willing to assist setting up the presentation with the commission. This program concentrates on revitalizing communities, enhancing their economic vitality, quality of life, and civic pride. Deland, the original program, is an example of what can be done in a community through this program. Leesburg, Ormond, and Eustis are also local participants and are thriving. Your leadership is necessary if we are going to bring back economic vitality to our community. And I encourage you to explore how this program can assist you in this effort. Thank you.
All right, so I'll, I'll address it. I met after the commission, last commission meeting, I met with Mrs. Myers. And we talked about the program. I said, just like everything else, I want to know more about the program, find out what it offers us. In our discussion, I had asked, okay, who's our coordinator? Who's the coordinator you have for the program? If I can have that information, I was told it's on the web. I can go find it. I've actually called the Main Street program several times. I've actually talked to one of the other coordinators. She had not been contacted. I don't know who Ms. Myers is talking to. But that's not the person I had been talking to at this program. So I, I have not got any more feedback. I said if, when we left the meeting, I said, if you get any more information, if you would forward it to me and we will look into this and if we want to put in for this, this would be a great thing for the city. That's where we left off.
Please, Commissioner DeVito.
Thank you. At the beginning of the meeting, in additions and deletions to the agenda, I'm sorry, my phone keeps making noise. We said we would discuss this. Where did we put it? Did we put it under general business? I think we did.
Put it in the general business.
Right, maybe we could talk about it then, because I think, I think there's, I think we should have a discussion and I think there's more comments to be read. So maybe we could have a discussion and bring it in for a landing under general business.
Okay.
That make sense? Is that okay with the city manager?
Without objection.
Are you ready for the next?
Yes.
The next is from Michelle Myers, 304 South Prospect Street regarding medians. Our overgrown and undermanaged medians running through the center of town are in eyesore and have been for some time. This has been a topic of discussion for the past few years and residents have been told the city does not have the manpower nor the money to properly maintain these. You could imagine my surprise when I recently found an agreement between the city and FDOT signed by Patrick Kennedy and Mayor Peterson with legal review by city attorney Jay Asbury, wherein FDOT agrees to provide funding in the amount of approximately $17,396 annually for median upkeep. This agreement was signed in 2014. The city invoices FDOT for these funds quarterly, but nothing has been done for the medians. I was told that FDOT voiced disappointment in the city's maintenance of the medians and this discrepancy was brought to Mr. Esposito's attention in early March. I would like to know what the city's plan of action is for the medians. I would hope that if in fact the city is receiving these monies, they would be allocated to the project for which they were designated. If we do not have the manpower, have we contracted the service out? I am further concerned, this money from FDOT could be taken away in the future upon realization that the city is disusing these funds or not using them in ways originally agreed upon. Please direct that something be done with the medians now with a timeline for action to be adhered to. These might be the only impression travelers along Summit have of our city. And I do have to share two photographs that were attached to this email. The first is this one. Does everyone see that?
No, your camera's off.
Oh, I can't share this with you then.
Well, I think we've all seen them, though.
It's just, it was, uh, let's try that work. No?
No, you must not have a camera on your computer.
Okay, we're going to have to pass. There were two photographs and they were from, of course, the medians.
Okay.
Okay, I do have two remaining.
Before you, before you go to that, Michael, you, you kind of addressed most of that with Tracy's letter. Do you have anything to add to this one?
No, I think I answered it with, with the first letter.
Okay, we can put this on the agenda for next month, get an update?
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone have a comment on that? We'll move on. Deb, go ahead, please.
Just have two quick comments for, I think we have about 20 members of the public watching. Just for anyone who doesn't know, Mr. Esposito became our city manager on February 1st. So he is new to this position and the median issue obviously way predates Mr. Esposito. And secondly, because of COVID, we weren't able to meet last month. So if it seems like we have an unusual number of comments, we also were not able to meet in March. So.
Thank you. Deb, please go ahead.
And please, thank you. The next email is from Michelle Myers, 304 South Prospect Street. And this is regarding Facebook and communication. It reads, I spoke to Mr. Esposito at the beginning of April regarding my concerns that the city uses the Facebook group Crescent City in quotations to notify the residents of information or business pertaining to the community. This Facebook group is a closed group, meaning you must ask for permission to be a member and your membership can be revoked. He assured me the city does not run or is affiliated with the group, but many residents think they do and are based on past announcements by the city and commissioner involvement. It has become apparent there is not a city-run Facebook page used to communicate with the public. People of all ages use social media and it is a great tool to get information out to the masses quickly. It's important that a city-run page is factual and accessible to all. I have seen where other cities have designated Facebook pages and use these pages to get information, especially pertaining to COVID-19 disseminated to their residents. I don't feel our city has been informative enough to the public through this pandemic. A simple letter of encouragement from the commission slash city manager or at least information about what is going on in the city during this pandemic would have been helpful to those who look to city leaders for guidance. Another situation where a city Facebook would be beneficial is communication regarding workers doing routine maintenance at the water tower if that is what's actually going on or giving residents a heads up about the sidewalk construction. While the sidewalk construction was finally posted on the city webpage right before starting, I would argue that people don't routinely check this and most only saw after Facebook shares or word of mouth. The men working at the water tower is causing speculation that something is wrong with our water again, and like before, we aren't being informed. Communication is vital, especially during these unsettling times. Lack of communication creates misunderstandings, conflict, circulation of misinformation, fear, and distrust. The city must do better to communicate with the citizens and I believe a designated Facebook page would help accomplish this. Mr. Esposito said, stated he would work on this. Please share what is being done to set up the Facebook page or some form of communication stream. Thank you.
All right, I, I think we're going to get an update on that. And we address that at that time? Okay, but good points from Michelle on that. Anymore?
I, I have one remaining email and it is actually, the subject matter is Sunrise Park. This is also from Michelle Myers at 304 South Prospect Street. The text of the email, I'm afraid, was exactly the same verbiage as the one I just read about Facebook. There's an unfortunate attachment, I assume. It does, however, have two photos, which obviously I haven't figured out how to do to share those with you and I apologize. There's two pieces of decking in the photographs showing some distress. And that would be the conclusion of our communic, or, all right, excuse me, public comments.
I've taken a look at the pictures and I can get what Public Works on addressing those, the two areas that were shown on the pictures.
Yeah, that'd be good. Well, I think that's more emails than we got in 2019 altogether. Harry, you have something to say? Commissioner Banks?
Yes, I really do. First, I want, sorry, I want to apologize for being late. I was held up. But it looked like to me, I agree with all the communication that are coming in. We really need that input to help us be better commissioners. But I don't think we should rush it. We got to take things as they come. Now, that meeting had been a problem almost ever since it's been put there. It, it haven't just became a problem. And the correct language is that we really do get paid for it. I, I understand that. But it looked like to me we overcrowded the new manager. It makes me believe that his office is not open to the citizen. Because it looked like to me they could come communicate with him and it probably wouldn't have to go through the, the way it's going through now. And I agree, communication is, is one of the chief things that we need to know as the leaders of the city. So we can get right on them. And my feeling kind of hurt because I don't have, I, I, I don't get no emails and I don't get, nobody don't tell me anything what's going on. Like just two commissioners against it, but that's not the way it should be. All of us should get the information. So we can, so we can get out there. And I ride around this town and you can ask Michelle, I run into her all the time. I rise all over this town almost every morning checking. Looking for a problem that I can come back and talk to the city manager about. So I think we need to get more information, the commissioners themselves. Whether we get it from our city manager or like we're getting tonight. And I, I don't think that this is a good way to get it tonight. The people got to tell us, we ought to get out there and find it ourselves. I'm through.
All right, well, Commissioner Banks, we talk constantly and we give information out there. I wanted to address getting information out publicly with a new website and Facebook and things like that. We talk like every week, at least we talk once. Some of those issues are new. I could just tell you, some, some of them I'm not either aware of or I need to delve into. I know we've been working on the medians. It's something that has been a discussion and we try to prioritize what we can do. And like you said, it's happened, it's been going on for a long time and it's not going to get solved. If you take the case of the medians, if we don't have irrigation working, I could put all the new landscaping you want, make it look pretty. So I know we've had conversations and that's why we're going to talk about them. I got a, I got a long list of things that I want to address that we'll talk on all of the subjects that we have been talking on for the past couple of months.
I think we need to brainstorm our known problem. Now, we really do have a known problem in this, in community and it's not only it's on, out there on Bay Street, it was terrible, but our police department took our approach and it kind of slowed it down. But we really need, I don't know whether we need to search back. I don't know whether we have ordinance. I know it was, it once was one, but you had to have a device. I know it was, it once was one, but you had to have a device to measure the noise. And by the time the officer get there, the noise gone. So that is a hard one.
Right. Well, and
Commissioner DeVito?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Banks, I don't know if you were here when I talked about my recommendation that I sent to the city manager. And that was that we've heard about it and talked about it so many times in the commission meeting just verbally that I think it's time for city staff between the city manager, the chief of police and the city attorney to really do a staff report and look at the ordinances, look at the problem and see where we go, need to go from there. But I think we need to have something in writing that then we could discuss either in a meeting or a workshop and let, let everyone join in. But I just think we need to have something in writing because we have talked about it a long time and it does, that does not seem to bring resolution. And it, it needs some specifics, you know, the, the police need to have something that they can do. Perhaps there's something we can do with one of the comments suggesting creating a stronger nuisance ordinance, but those kind of things need to be researched. And I think then when we have some research, we can make some choices.
Well, I agree, Commissioner DeVito. I agree with you on that. Commissioner West can kind of coincide on that too, cause she know that it been a noise problem for years also.
Absolutely, absolutely. I don't know whatever we need to look at. I agree with Commissioner DeVito. We need to look at ordinances. We may need to put something in place to help the police department. But it's not just, it's everywhere. I had neighbors calling me last week over a party that was going on at the end of Reed Street. And the noise was there from dusk till midnight. So we need to look at this. Everyone has the right to have a party to have their music, but all your neighbors don't have the right to hear it.
And just one little follow-up from that, if I might.
Please.
Right, I mean, this has been going on a long time. A gathering place used to be in front of our house back when my grandmother was alive. There was shooting out there. And just like now, get large gatherings seem to create a lot of trash and debris that I am noticing in other areas of the city. But as Commissioner West said, well, you know, it moves around, you know, we had Bay and Rocket Street, but noise and trash seem to be going hand in hand. So. Anyway, these are, these are things to look at, but we, we need some specifics.
Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Yes. I would respond to Ms. DeVito. I think it was last year, maybe a year and a half ago. I worked on an ordinance, a noise ordinance for three months. I presented an ordinance for review. I advised everybody that that was a, a, one of the best ordinances I had seen. It was out of Flagler Beach. I adopted some of theirs along with ours. And the commission discussed it. I think it was decided by the commission, one of the best ways to attack that problem was get our state legislature involved just to tweak that state ordinance on breach of the peace. And then it was talked about, well, maybe we'll wait till we get a new police chief. But I don't think I need to, any of us need to put a big staff report in writing when an ordinance has already been done. I think it's up to maybe the commission to do whatever they're gonna do.
Let's go ahead and put that ordinance, Jay, on next month's agenda. We'll take another look at that.
Let's look at it again next month, yes.
Okay.
And another thing, another thing, Mayor. I don't think it's, I don't think it's right to bring in a new city manager for a couple of months and pile him full of letters of things that are wrong that he has had nothing to do. And I don't think it's right for one person to give him instructions on what he should or shouldn't do. The commission speaks for the citizens of Crescent City, not one or two people.
Agreed.
Thank you.
And if Jay or the chief, Chief Carmen could let us know what tools we could, you know, we could provide him with to help him with the noise and so on, we can work on that. So. Any other comments on that particular letter? Okay. Deb, is that the last of the letters you said? You're
Yes, sir. That is, that's the final correspondence.
Okay, we have approval of commission meetings. I'm gonna use unanimous consent unless anyone wants to pull any of these three minutes from city commission meeting of January 16th, 2020, city commission meeting of February 13th, 2020, and city commission meeting of March 12th, 2020. Hearing none, they have been approved. Thank you. All right. We have nothing for consent agenda. I don't believe, we're gonna go on to general business, but seems like we've had a foot in this already for a half hour. If you want to go ahead, Mr. Esposito and cover some of the topics.
Sure. So first order businesses, the order presentation, we have an auditor, James and Moore Company. We have two representatives, Brendan McKittrick and James Halloran, who can, they have a little PowerPoint presentation to go over the budget. It's for the actual 2018, 2019 financial budget or fiscal year budget. So they can, they can go over that. All right, I don't know who wants to start, Brendan or James.
Right. Evening, Commissioner and Mayor, James Halloran, again with James Moore and Company. And very happy to perform the audit again for the city. This year I'm gonna mix it up. Brendan McKittrick is my senior manager on this engagement. And he's asked me if he could present to you guys tonight. And I thought he was more incapable of doing it. Of course, I'll be here as well throughout the presentation for any questions you guys may have. Or you can ask, we ask both Brendan and I. So I'm gonna turn it over to Brendan now and he'll start working through the, our presentation that we have.
Thanks, James. Michael, can I share my screen? I know we had tried it earlier.
Did you, were you able to do it now?
It's, it says it's disabled.
All right, hold on one second. Let's see about. Okay, see if you can do it now.
Yep. All right. Can everybody see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Perfect. So you should have actually received three documents from us. One is the new set of bound financial statements. The other is a letter, which we refer to as a SaaS 114 letter, which has some required communication for the commission. And then the third is actually a printout of the PowerPoint presentation. So you can either see it on the screen or kind of follow along in the printout as well. You know, as the city manager and also James mentioned, we did provide an audit over fiscal year in September 30th, 2019. Kind of want to first start out by thanking everyone involved, including, including Debbie for giving us everything we needed. It's somewhat of an intensive process of us asking for stuff. So it's definitely a team effort for getting through everything. So really appreciate her hard work. As I mentioned, those financial statements that you have in front of you, the bound ones, those are the city's responsibility to prepare those. However, there are four documents that we include in the, the report as well that are our report or James Moore's documents. The first one being the audit report, which is on pages one and two of the financials. Basically, in the audit report, we kind of, we've got some legalese in there basically indicating, hey, management's responsible for the financials and we're responsible for making sure those financials are in accordance with GAAP and that we perform certain auditing standards. And ultimately, we're gonna express an opinion. And the opinion we expressed this year is an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion or, or the best opinion that you can get for financial statements, which is actually a change from last year. The city last year had what's called a modified or qualified opinion with regards to OPEP and pension. This year, they've actually gone ahead and hired an actuary to calculate certain pension, pension calculations and OPEP calculations. And again, that resulted in what's called an unmodified opinion. So again, the best opinion we can provide. The second report is the internal control and compliance report, which is on pages 49 through 51. That report is, includes any sort of what we call material weaknesses or control deficiencies. It's kind of require communication and a material weakness is a deficiency or combination of deficiencies that where there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement could occur in the entity's financial statements in that it would not be prevented to detect it or corrected in a timely basis. A significant deficiency is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies that's less severe, but still just as important to bring the attention of the commission. So the, the six that we have here, the three material weaknesses and three significant deficiencies. These are actually the same comments we have from the previous year. There is an asterisk here where where there was a prior year comment that was corrected. And kind of to that, that point too, on pages 56 and 57, there are responses from management as to what they're planning on doing to address those comments. So any questions on those? Okay. And if one quick question, am I presenting the presentation with my notes or without my notes, Michael? I'm sorry.
Without your notes.
Okay, perfect.
You're good.
Okay, I, wait a minute. I do have one question while we have this. Mayor, am I recognized?
You are recognized.
Okay, so Mr. McKittrick, the part where it says overall financial condition assessment is inconclusive?
Yes.
Did you explain that part and I missed it?
Commissioner DeVito, I haven't gotten to that report yet.
Okay.
So you're getting ahead of me, so.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm on the bullet right above it, the internal control and compliance report.
Okay.
I was just kind of explaining that, that there were the three material weaknesses and three significant deficiencies. And again, management's got a plan in place. I can go into the chapter 10, 550 report if everyone wants me to, but I wanted to see if anyone had questions first on this report.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought we were going to the next slide already. So sorry about that.
No problem.
Please, Brendan, go on.
Okay. The next report is the auditor general reports of management letter to the auditor general. Again, there's some required communication in there as well. Kind of talking about if there, there are any prior year findings, what, over the status of those findings. And then we also have two suggestions for improvements, one having to do with the vendor listing in the software. Basically, there were some old and stale vendors and we're just recommending that management go in there, review those and clean them up. It's my understanding that they've already gone and started that process to clean those up. And then the second one being interfund activity. Basically, there were due, due to, due from account balances that were, hadn't changed from last year. So recommending the city go look at those and see what can be paid down. And again, those, that's another one the city's looking at and already starting to work through as well. Now, Commissioner DeVito, to your point, the overall financial condition assessment. Basically, one of the procedures we have to do is there's 25 financial indicators that the state wants us to look at. One being a five-year trend for the city itself to see kind of which, you know, how, how the city's doing over those five years. And another is to look at kind of a benchmark compared to the city's peers based on size. We go through that and we, it's, it's a form that we fill out and it kind of, you know, based on what those ratings end up being, we have a kind of a rating on that. With, with the city of Crescent City, you all have what's called inconclusive or an average rating. If there was an unfavorable rating, that would have to be required in the report. So essentially, there's no communication of unfavorable.
Okay, and I do have one question about that. In, in terms of our our infrastructure, for example, our water and sewer our water and sewer issues and the financial needs for the future. Does our ability to forecast those or to fund those factor into this overall financial condition assessment?
Commissioner, it doesn't take that into account. The, the criteria is set by the auditor general. So that's not one of the items that they, they have us look at.
Right, but are, are they a factor somewhere else? Or are those not looked at at all?
They're, they're not looked at in this assessment provided by the auditor general.
Or, I mean, and do they factor into your independent auditor report at all?
It, it's, it's not part of a financial statement audit for us to assess the, the capital asset, you know, level and what the capacity is and what the remaining useful lives are.
Okay, so that's not included in this?
Correct. Yeah, it's not part of a financial statement audit. You would hire a licensed professional engineer firm. Someone like that would be able to assess the, the adequacy of your infrastructure systems.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then the fourth report on this, this slide is the investment examination report. Essentially, you know, it indicates here that there are no findings, but there are certain requirements that we look at to make sure the city's in compliance with the state statutes with regards to investment policies. Again, no, no findings here. And then the last bullet point is the impact fee affidavit. This is new this year. New in that it's now required to be included annually. And it's actually attached as the last page in the financial statements, but it's required to be signed and notarized by the highest finance individual. So Debbie signed that, the finance director. And it indicates what ordinance was put into, put the impact fee into place and that the, the city is in compliance with state statutes. The next slide here is a five-year trend of the general fund, looking at both revenues expenditures and the fund balance. The most recent year for fiscal year 19, you can see revenues actually increased with expenditures going down, which ultimately increased the fund balance. A lot of that, most of this activity is due to a lot of the grant activity. I know this year there was an increase in grant revenue related to the boat ramp and the SCOP grant. And then also on the expenditure side that had to do with the capital outlay. So what was being built this year versus last year? So again, a kind of a timing difference. But overall, again, an increase in revenues, decrease in expenditures and ultimately an increase in fund balance. We do an analysis on the general fund where we take the total assigned and unassigned fund balance and we compare it to expenditures and transfers out to get a ratio. This year, the ratio is at 93%, which is actually an increase from last year of 72%. The GFOA or the Government Finance Officers Association recommends a minimum, again, kind of like this is where you should start of two months or 16.7%. One of the things we also like to remind the city and the commission is, it's not just the percentage to look at, but it's actually the dollar amount as well. Just thinking of worst-case scenario terms of, you know, a hurricane came through, what would be some of the outlay to, you know, whether it be cleaning debris or whatever it might be. So again, kind of looking at both amounts and making sure that it's at a level the commission's comfortable with.
One thing to think about with those amounts, we, we've already heard from the state that they're expecting, you know, potentially a 20% decline in state revenues. So that, that's something to consider. What I, what we typically see in, in smaller cities like, like yourself, we typically see, and, and it's a good thing, we usually see a little bit higher balance as a percentage. You think of, you know, 72% last year, that was nine months, 93, that's about 11 months. And the, and the reason for that in a smaller And the, and the reason for that, in a smaller government, whether it's a city or a county, you don't have the ability that you do in a very large government that has multiple enterprise funds that are significant to borrow on short-term basis is just for cash flow purposes. And it, so in a smaller government, what you'll typically, will be typically find, and it's, and it's, and it's a good thing, it's a prudent thing, to have that little bit higher fund level balance. You also have, depending on your size city, your, your, your property tax value base. You know, of how much that potentially could fluctuate and, and, and how much, you know, your millage rate, if, if, if you needed to raise it because the values dropped a lot, that may not be feasible depending on the makeup of your community. So that's why, you know, we always kind of recommend, you know, more than that on, on smaller governments.
Thanks, James. The next slide just has to do with some of the other governmental funds. So the discretionary tax fund, which is the better placed funds. Basically, that restrictions due to Florida statute and county agreement for those better placed funds. That's at a balance of about three hundred and fifty thousand. The community redevelopment agencies restricted monies for the CRA of about ninety-three thousand. And the, the second point here is there's a, a new requirement coming up for fiscal year twenty twenty that if revenues or expenditures are greater than a hundred thousand, the CRA actually gets a separate audit done. And kind of speaking to both the city manager and the Finance Director, it does sound like the city is probably going to meet that threshold. So next year, we'll, we'll be presenting an audit separately for the CRA. And then the last point here, voluntary fire, there is a ten thousand dollar balance, a restricted balance for the volunteer department. As my understanding, this balance has been transferred. So for, for next year, there will no, no longer be a voluntary fire restricted balance. So similar to the general fund, we look at, we also look at a ratio for the business type funds, so the gas and water and sewer, where we take the unrestricted net position and compare it to operating expenditures as, as a percentage. So you can see a three-year trend here. One of the things we always like to say too is this is kind of half the story. The other half is beneath the ground, so really the infrastructure supporting those systems. So really making sure the commission's aware, and I know they are, to, to continue to, you know, make improvements and continue to make sure those systems are there to support the, the citizens in the city. So again, this is just kind of a three-year trend, but just being aware that there, there's also other considerations when thinking about these utility funds. Some other items to note, within the note disclosures, note seven, long-term debt. On the governmental side, there's no external debt. On the business type, there is about two million dollars in debt made up of a couple revenue bonds of about one point eight million. And then there's the loan with the Florida Gas Utility, which is that agreement between the city, Florida Gas Utility and the DOT. Basically, that's the retainage left on the, kind of the activity going on or the building of the gas relocation. Note nine is the employer retirement plan. So city has three plans, the general employee defined contribution, the fire defined benefit and the police defined benefit. We'll talk about that on the next slide. And then note eleven is the restatement of fund balance and net position. So as I mentioned, the city received an unmodified opinion this year because of the city hiring actuaries to, to make those calculations for the pension plan and OPED. Because of that, we have to restate the fund balance and net position. So that's what that note is describing, kind of the restatement of those balances. This slide is talking to the, the pension funds, specifically the fire and police pension. Currently, the total balance is a four hundred and four thousand dollar net pension asset. And break, broken out between fire of two hundred and twenty thousand and police of a hundred and eighty thousand. And basically, this is a, a calculation, again, determined by the actuaries to determine what the net pension liability is. And they compare it to what's considered the fiduciary net position. And at September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, there was actually a net pension asset. Now, it's important to remember too, again, because of timing purposes, part of that net, net position for the fiduciary is impacted by the investment accounts. So again, with the economy doing somewhat of a roller coaster right now. Today, if you were to look at it, it's probably very different than what it looked at September thirtieth. So that, just keep that in mind when you're looking at that. And the percent funded is a similar kind of analysis, basically saying the funding percentage of both the pension and fire. But again, would be affected if you were to look at it today versus September thirtieth. And now we will open it up to any questions.
I've got a question. If we turn to, under the big black book, page ten, and as for the year ending September thirtieth, twenty nineteen, you look at the water and sewer, wastewater, total business type activity. Under business type activities, you have thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred. You follow me there?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And then when I was looking at that and then looking at another number on page sixteen, underwater and sewer, we have two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. Is that, is that two different categories?
The, the thirty-seven thousand, what that does not include, if you look down below in that column, you'll see investment earnings.
Okay.
And miscellaneous revenue, so there's nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars of investment earnings as well as miscellaneous revenues.
Okay.
So once you add those two in, you'd come to that same twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar loss. It's just presenting that income statement activity in a different format that's required by governmental accounting standards.
Right. And that's another point is, is that it's a loss. That's a lot of money for, I, you know, I guess it's enough for you guys to explain why there's a loss, but there's a loss on the water sewer side of the house in that enterprise that we have. So I guess we need to look at that or get an answer on, on, is that something to panic about or?
Where you want to look at is to see on your, on your rate study. Have you guys, you guys have one currently in place or you're going to get one?
We had a water rate study, correct?
So that's what's going to drive typically how you set your rates. And that's what you usually look to from a cash flow standpoint. Because some of what you see that losses is non-cash. So you have depreciation expense, which is close to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's part of that loss. So that's a non-cash item. But you also originally laid out the cash for that infrastructure that's in the ground that's now being depreciated over time. So that's why you always got to go back to your rate studies. And, and, and that's why you hire those consultants to come in to help you, one, figure out for funding your projects going forward. To make sure you have enough available there, considering what your debt payments and debt services and whether you would borrow for that or you're able to get some grants for that money.
Right. And obviously, we want to keep it kind of revenue neutral or make a little bit of a profit, but we definitely can't continue to run at a loss, even with the, the depreciation.
Right, and mayor, we're going to look at those rate studies when we come up with the next fiscal budget. We've, that was one of the, one of the comments from the auditors that we're going to address.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment?
I've got a suggestion, mayor, if I may. Can we get these audit books a little earlier? An, an printed copy so we can have time to study it? I just got mine this week. So quite naturally, I didn't have time to go into detail and to study it. It did a whole lot, there's not a whole lot of detail, but I would like to get it a little earlier so I can look at it a little closer.
We can do that. And if, and if you guys have a question after the meeting, when you're looking at it, feel free to give Brendan and I a call and we'll, we'll, we'll spend some time with you to, to go over it.
Right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I, I, I agree with you, Commissioner. We could have tabled the discussion for a month or something, but a point well taken. Who else?
Well, I do have one question. Am I recognized, mayor?
Yes, ma'am, please go ahead.
Okay. To follow up on what Commissioner Banks said, that we went ahead and had the auditors give their presentation when, you know, we've had our books for a fairly short time. Within the auditor's contract and all that kind of thing, if we do have further questions, what is there availability to answer those questions, I guess, as relayed by the city manager or, or whatever? Is that included in the fee if we have follow-up questions?
If, if you guys just want to have like a half hour telephone conversation, we, we're not going to charge you for that.
Okay. So, all right, so if we have a few more questions, then, okay, that's all I want to know, thank you.
Yep, I mean, if it gets into doing extensive, you know, research that, you know, to figure out stuff, then we'll let you know before we incur that.
Okay, thank you.
But just to, to talk to you about the financials, that your financial statements, you guys need to understand them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other comments on? Are you guys done with your presentation?
Yes, we are.
Okay, any other comments, questions about the presentation?
Just thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Do we need a, a motion or a vote on accepting this or?
Don't, you can, you can make one if you want to.
Typically, I could tell you from what typically we're just, most just do an acceptance form. I don't see the attorney there on camera, but he'd probably be the one to really ask.
Okay, well, we'll just leave it at that for right now.
No, I'm right here, Brett.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
You can just move and second it to, and voted on it that you accept it.
Do I hear a motion on, on accepting the audit as presented? Deb, you, you have a, the, who made the motion and seconded?
Yes, I'm, just to confirm, Commissioner West made the motion and Commissioner Banks seconded, is that correct?
You need to turn it around.
Oh, I didn't, okay, the other way, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any, any further discussion on, on the motion? Harry, non, Deb, can you do a roll call, please?
I can. Commissioner West.
Hi.
Commissioner Kane DeVito.
Hi.
Commissioner Banks.
Hi.
Mayor Peterson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. All right, next thing is city projects update and city manager, Michael Esposito, is going to give us some updates. So please, you've got the floor, sir.
Okay, so I will go through them and we can discuss them. When anybody has any questions. The, the first project update is the rebid of demolition of one oh five Cypress Avenue. Last time we had received the bids, we had to reject them. This time, we've given some time and we're going to be going out to rebid that. I think this time we are clearer. All the bidders I've talked to about where they were deficient, so we should be going out with that and we should see that in another month. We can put that down, we can put that to bed.
Okay, so we should have the, the results from bids within a month?
Yeah, about a month.
Okay.
Okay. Next one is Harry Banks Park, we have a CDBG grant that's in the final stages. We're at the final phase before closeout. So we have some remaining items, we have some punch list items to get handled by the contractor. We've also had, we had some funds left over that we are using to handle some deficiencies they had in the project. So we handle, we have a drainage issue, we had a drainage issue on bay that they're addressing. Also, we had some missing guardrail that we needed to get put in. And then we, whatever was left over, we put for some landscaping. So we went with, there was some live oaks and some cypress trees and a little bit of mulch. And they put in one or two areas. It's not enough to cover the whole park or the whole pond, but it's just enough to get it to look like, you know, it's just not an open field. Once we go through that and we go through our punch list items, we, we should be done and we should be able to close this grant.
Hey, cool. Mayor?
Yes, Harry, you're recognized.
Is that where we're going to get the funds to modify, I reckon that's the word, for the speed bump on Bay Street?
Oh, so one of, one of the, we talked about this yesterday, Commissioner Banks. One of the punch list items they have is to take those, we'll call them speed blips. To make the speed humps because they, they did not put them into what was specified and how the drawings were. So that's one of the items on the punch list for the contractors is to come in to make them regular speed humps, similar to what they have on Walnut right now.
Good, okay, thank you.
They are a little deficient.
Correct.
On that subject, now I know you're talking about the grant itself, but once they're done, are, are we going to be maintaining what's inside the fence as far as bush hogging or anything like that? How's that going to be maintained or is it going to go back natural?
No, we're maintaining it right now. I know it, it got a little overgrown, so Public Works went in there and they mow it. So they're going to do regular maintenance on it.
Very good. It looks much nicer. Commissioner DeVito.
Right, thank you for explaining the landscaping that appeared and where that came from, also about the speed bumps. I was out there today and they definitely don't look right. I was going to say, is that supposed to do anything? So thank you for answering that. Overall, so that's supposed to be a pond there, that's what we're looking at?
That's what that is, yes.
My thought is, and hopefully the Tree and Garden Board can address this. I think it could look better, I think it looks a little scruffy. It's, you know, maybe it will not look so scruffy once they take away all the construction materials.
Well, and we've talked internally, Commissioner. We've talked about, once the project's done, if we, if we have some funds that we can address, maybe aerating the pond with a fountain and doing some shore cleanup there. So that's something you definitely want to address and we'll be looking at.
Okay. But it is, it is within budget with a few money left over to take care of these other items.
Correct.
So that's wonderful.
Yes. Hey, any other questions on this? I will move on to the next one. Continuing on Harry Banks Community Park, we're putting out a bid for ball field lights. I know this has been, this has been an ongoing thing that went, now we're going to see come to fruition. We're putting a bid out there to replace the ball field lights on the softball field. And that's another bid that we're going to put in the same timeframe as the demo. So we'll have multiple bids going on over the next month or so to get solicitations to get that going.
I noticed, let me finish. I noticed, or I'm sorry, you and I, Michael, talked about having a standard and I guess that'll go out in the bid about how many lumens are required. How is that determined?
We get a minimum lumens. We had gotten some, companies had just given us some information about what they would, if they would not, if they were to bid on, not really to bid on it, but they would give us some quotes about if they were to put field lights, what would be the minimum? And we got a couple of different grades of lumen. So we went with what, what, what are the middle of the road would be and it's a minimum standard. It's enough for regular ball fields anywhere. So once again, this is not just run by the sport, it's run by that field because I'm also asking for them to do a report on what's the output. So we're not just getting something that does not cover that, those areas.
Gotcha.
Mayor.
Who was first, go ahead, Commissioner West.
I'm really concerned, getting the lights up is one, one issue, but then paying for them once they're up and used, they're pretty expensive. Are there light bulbs like our LEDs or something that give the light but have less of a bill at the end of the month? Is that possible?
That's, that's the goal. The goal is to have LED lights, not incandescent, not, not gas bulbs that they've used in the past. I've spoken with FPL, so it's, we'll get the same output for a lot less.
Alright. That sounds better.
Like I said at the last meeting. This is something that concerns me because I just don't want to put up lights and they're on forever. We pay a huge bill. No one controls it. I've talked to several of the commissioners. This is something that once we start to go down the road and we get the bids back and say, we're going to do this, we're going to have some park rules in place, we're going to have controls on timers. Timers are part of the bid too. So it's not just, it's just throwing up lights, there's an on and off switch. There are going to be timers and there are going to be park rules or who could use it because you can't just think what organization, you need to, what warehouse needs to be out there and it just can't be put on by the general public. They're going to need to come in and then you talk about if they have a formal league or they're doing something on the regular or they're going to pull a permit to be out there.
I think the permit idea is great.
Okay. Commissioner DeVito, please.
Right, great. I had mentioned to the city manager that we had actually talked about who might use it and the requirements and obviously, most of our park rules say that the park is closed after dark. There was an extensive discussion with the people who brought this up, the Pop Warner group, about their desire to be very responsible, what they might do. So I've encouraged Mr. Esposito to get with Lay Dent, is that Bandridge or Dan, I think it's Dandridge, who first brought this to our attention because she had, she shared with us quite a few proposals of how they would do this in a responsible manner. And I think it would be good to get her to come back and repeat what she said. I mean, to share with Mr. Esposito because obviously he wasn't there. The other thing is, I'm wondering what the timeframe could be because I've seen on social media that Pop Warner is hoping to have lights available for their activities this fall. Is that possible?
I believe that's possible. I believe one of the reasons why it's kind of taken now, we're putting the bids out, we had a problem trying to even just get asphalt bids or contractors because people were locked down on COVID. So now, I think now is the time we put the bids out there. We give them a month or so, some reasonable time to get enough qualified bids back. And we give, their quotes are usually 60 days. I believe that we can give them and we'd be ready to go to say, okay, we've, we've awarded the bid. We can have them up in plenty of time for the fall.
Well, that would be good because just to remind everybody and Mr. Esposito, when the Pop Warner people first came to us, Commissioner Banks, I'm sure you remember, the park's named after you. They, we kind of sent them around to the county, you know, we kind of pushed them back a little bit first. They did a lot of legwork on this. They're very enthusiastic and I assume they're going to be the same next year. They, they have a lot of kids. So I'm hoping that we can come through for them.
And, and just my background is I have extensive experience. I ran several nonprofits, especially sports organizations that did flag football, cheerleading, football, bowling, you name it. Oh, I know the usage, how they want to use it, when they want to use it. And that's something that I, that I encourage that we'll, we'll be in discussions with that when it comes time to saying, okay, how are you going to use the fields?
Okay. I mean, they just, they're ready to go.
I know.
What I see on social media, so.
Right.
What else we got?
All right. Next thing we have is the FDOT Scott Central Avenue paving. So this is a project that, right now, the DOT has finalized plans for. Are looking, it's another bid that we're looking to go out. We need to have construction and engineering services. So that's something that the city has to put out. So we're going to be soliciting bids to get the inspection services done. Once we can do that, the DOT can do engineering and some other survey and geotechnical stuff. They're looking to start this at the end of the year. I'm not saying they're going to start paving, but they're going to start their process of notice of, you know, they're going to award the bid and probably the beginning of the year, we would start seeing paving.
Now, we'll, we'll be reimbursed for the engineering cost.
So we put up. The engineering cost right now, that's part of the grant. That's part of all of that money.
Gotcha.
There's, there was a separate number just for CEI services.
Right. So, two questions. Thank you. So I think I asked this before, the total paving would take about, what, 60 days ballpark? I'm not sure I asked you. I might have asked the prior city manager.
Yeah, and I, I don't know the timeframe. Once again, once they do it, probably 60 days sounds reasonable. But once again, they usually go on, you know, calendar days and how the contract's set up, but it shouldn't be that long.
Of course, you know, January, February is kind of season for this part of Florida. And I'm hoping also that we're going to give a heads up to all the businesses along Central Avenue so that they know well in advance and that we'll try to accommodate, you know, with signage and making sure that they're not disadvantaged during construction. As far as customer flow.
Okay. What else we have?
Last one, everyone's favorite sidewalk project, the DOT Putnam County Multi-Use Sidewalk Trail. I'll just go a little bit specifics about the project. It started April 20th. They are in week four. We just had a week four progress meeting. One of the things as they get through the project, once again, is it was stated before, this is a project before me, plans have been done for years. Going forward, you could see if you go around town, there are several sections of sidewalk. It is something that is being addressed almost property by property because we have questions about where the right of way is. We have questions about driveways. We have questions about where utilities are. So we have been working hand in hand with the county DOT, their, the contractor and their engineering firm. We address each one of those as we go. I know the question came up about driveways. One of the issues we've had with the project is they have driveways drawn on the plans, but they don't have quantities to reimburse the contractor. So what they've done is they've gotten to a point where we've stopped and just said, okay, continue with the sidewalk and we'll address that in a change order to get what we're going to do going forward. I don't know the rhyme or reason. Once again, I wasn't here on who got a driveway apron, who didn't, and where the sidewalk went. Now we're just in the process of working. They gave us a three-week look ahead. Right now, they have done, they've gone down Main, they've gone up Reed, they've gone South Prospect and they're kind of jumping around. They didn't give me a rhyme or reason of where they go and why they go. They just kind of, we talk about it and say, this is the next couple of weeks, this is where we're going to be.
Commissioner DeVito?
I can partly explain that. And I, I've been following this project since it was proposed back in 2014 or 2016 as a homeowner because our house is on the route. And as well, constructing sidewalks has a lot of impact on trees, which I had concerns about and I still have concerns about. One thing I just, one reason they're jumping around is because in, in quite a few spots, I think they're making special provisions to put permeable sidewalk near certain trees that are very close to the sidewalk. I have, I, I got a copy of the plans and looked at them back in February when we started seeing the blue, you know, markers show up. I inquired about this. I'm really not sure why the city did not get notice that this project was happening. The residents did not get notice. And as well, there are some gaps in the plans. What they're trying to resolve some issues now, there were actually some areas on South Prospect Street that the plans did not call for sidewalk, but it turns out when you get on the ground and look at it, the sidewalks are completely broken and need to be replaced for a significant distance. And it really concerns me because the sidewalk has abuts the trees and the tree roots very significantly. They, the plans do a good job of noting where the heritage trees are. But I'm not, I'm not totally convinced that all of their provisions for taking up sidewalk and putting down the new sidewalk are really going to adequately protect our trees. I, it's my recommendation that the city spend a little of its own money and hire the Lippies who are very experienced. They work for Disney and they have expertise in how to place sidewalk next to trees. They might have some helpful recommendations. They talk that language and know a lot more than me. But I go out there every day, or not every day, and look at what they're doing. I, there are some things in the plans that sounded like they were going to have an arborist present when they were removing existing sidewalk from around trees and it turns out that's not true. They said the contract only says they can and they've decided not to. So there are some tree issues and I would love for us to get a consultant to kind of make some recommendations to them. The other thing is their, their contract provisions call for 24-hour notice to homeowners when the driveway is going to be blocked for eight hours or more. They were on our street yesterday and today. There is a significant amount of noise and dust when they start removing that sidewalk, huge clouds of white dust go into the air. I saw it go straight into the building where Choice's Beauty Salon is. If you are sick or trying to work from home during this COVID time, the noise is very, very significant. It shook pictures and mirrors on our walls today. So, and of course, that goes with a construction project, but my point being, if there's anything the city manager can do to make sure when they're coming in with this heavy work, you know, that involves, you know, the dump truck banging, clanging, dust, whatever, I, I really think residents need a little bit more than 24 hours notice. Especially, and, and also if their driveway is going to be blocked because you can imagine, you know, coming back into town, if, if the notice didn't get to you, you might not be able to drive in your driveway. So overall, I think the contractors are very nice. They seem to do very neat work. But a little more notice to homeowners. Because, you know, if, if I had a sick person at home or someone with COPD or asthma, I might want them to be gone while that dust was going to be in the air. And then I do have a concern that we need a little more consultation about the work proximate to the trees, to the heritage trees. So that's what I have to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything on the sidewalks? What else we have? Anyone have something to say? Go ahead, Michael.
We'll just work like, you know, just to touch base and the final words on the sidewalks. This is a project that is sponsored by the county because we are not what they call local area project certified. So they have, they gave notification. When I first came on, I asked about the project. I had been calling them for weeks and then the person who's the project coordinator, he started when I started. He actually had to get up the speed to it. I didn't, I was not notified until a week before that we were going to actually start. So we've kind of been behind the eight ball on that notification we're working on. They do have a tree arborist. If he is not there, I need to know that. I was told that he would be there when they deal with the.
Not, he is not there and they don't plan to have him there.
Well, I will, I will follow up with that because that was one of my concerns when I first talked to them. So if they're not following through with that, I will make sure that they follow through with it.
Well, also, if I could just follow up, I asked for the resumes of their arborists. There, there are different kinds of arborists. Their arborists are more construction oriented. The kind of consultation that I think we need and it's not expensive is from someone who specializes specifically in ameliorating construction impacts around tree roots and also has a recommended technique on, this is an ongoing problem that we have with the sidewalk going over the tree roots and they haven't told me whether theirs meets the standard, but there is a special meshing that you put in in addition to the permeable sidewalk. So, you know, I would like to hope that what they have planned and they're holding the permeable sidewalk till later fits with the highest standard so that the sidewalks will last. And of course, the concern that I have about the trees is the project's funded with federal funds, but if our trees are damaged, A, we lose the trees and B, the cost will be on us in the future. All the cost will be on us of any damage that occurs. So.
If you look at, go ahead, finish your point.
No, that, that was just my point that.
I've always wondered, you know, I'm at City Hall there, so across the way here, the great tree at Central and May, Central and Summit that overhangs over Central. Boy, you got roads, sidewalk. I don't think it has any, I don't know how it gets water.
Right, but, but Mayor, look at the condition of it. We spent thousands of dollars to keep it alive and that, you're using that as an example. That tree was not treated properly. It would have been a much more beautiful and healthy tree if some of the more advanced techniques that are now available had been used or if the sidewalk hadn't been paved right up to the base of the tree. That is an example of how not to treat a tree. And of course, if we were together in person, I would share with you, Jacksonville has lost huge trees because of tree root abuse. Abusing tree roots is how you lose trees. And the city of Tallahassee, two blocks from the Capitol, they just took down their beautiful heritage oaks because they did too much construction around it. It's near Highway 27. DOT is helping them with the cost of taking down those trees. That's not going to happen on Main Street and Prospect Street and Grand Rondo. And it just, you know, it's penny, it saves money and turns out with a better result if you take care upfront. But yes, that poor tree at the stoplight. Total example of how not to treat your oak tree.
Very good. Alright. Anything else on that subject? On sidewalks? Alright, Michael?
Alright, well, I'm done with city project update. We want to talk about COVID-19 update?
Mayor, I have a question for the city manager about the water tower project.
Go ahead.
Pardon?
I'm going to actually cover that when I talk about, when I, when I, if you want me to talk about that. You want me to talk about it now? You want me to talk about it later?
Well, I have a specific question about it. So I just want to get my question in when you talk about the water tower. Okay, so I'll save that.
Well, I was going to talk about, you were talking about the work going on right now?
Correct.
Okay.
You want me to ask my question?
You can, if you want me to. I can cover it right now. If you'd like me to go ahead and just cover what I was going to talk about.
Go ahead. Go, go ahead. We can cover that subject right now.
Okay.
You have a question? Commissioner DeVito?
Oh, I thought you wanted the city manager to talk about the project. You just want me to ask my question?
Here's your question and I'll, I'll, I'll answer it with.
Okay. Well, actually, my observation, my question is on the subject of trees. I rode my bike over there. It's amazing what happens when I ride my bike around town for exercise. I hurt my foot. I'm riding my bike. I see all kinds of things. That, the way the equipment is jammed in, in that little area, it is the worst possible arrangement of equipment you could have for the tree roots. There's some big oak trees around that water tower. It, there's huge ruts. They, they've got the heaviest equipment and they've got all buckets of things that I think they could spread out a little bit. That are, that is an example of how we should not place construction equipment near big oak trees when we're doing a project. And if anything, some boards should have been put down or some mulching. But they really, I don't know how much longer they have to go on. They really need to get some of that heavy equipment away from the tree roots and probably we need to put some wood chips down afterwards. I mean, there's, I think there's just this, it's just terribly torn up and compacted at this point. So we, we should be, we should be getting contractors to not, you know, be so hard on the trees and, and that particular area. I, I'm sure they have to use some of the property, but the way they've got it done is just about as bad as it could be. So that's what I have to say about that. That's it.
Yeah, and just, just to expand, I, I, they're almost done with that work. That's contract work that we have every year. Not specifically every year to do that area or that ground storage tank, but I can talk to Public Works and we can go out there and make sure that they, they're cognizant of where they're parking and where they're loading equipment and things like that. they're cognizant of where they're parking and where they're loading equipment and things like that.
Right, because I mean, that's the city's responsibility. That's, to me, a practice that we need to change. And, you know, just do something a little different.
Duly noted. Michael?
Did you want to talk about COVID?
Are you done with the water tower?
I am, it was more, you know, they're doing the work, they're wrapping up the work right there. They had the, and I kind of covered it before where, you know, that's the groundwater tank. And, you know, we have people working overtime just to make sure that water is flowing. So I don't really have anything more to add on that, but-
They should be wrapping up in the next week or so?
They should be wrapping up this week, and then we'll probably see the residual issues with color and taste kind of fade over the next week.
Very good. Okay. And move on to COVID-19?
COVID-19, Mayor and I, we're in a twice-a-week call with the county. We've been following their lead on what's going on. And we're on with the other municipalities we've been, although, you know, if you want to go by numbers and say we've been at 127, talk about positive cases, we still need to be in that mode of washing your hands, social distancing, not having large groups of people. One of the things that they started to open things up as we go through the phases of this, I just want to point out that one of the things, even in the president's plan for phasing in things opening up, they are phased where when you move from one phase to the other, if they see a spike in numbers, if there's the deaths increase or the positive cases or hospitalizations, you know, go through the roof, you will start seeing things close. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but that's how this works. One of the things they opened up was the parks. And I recently just said, we had the playgrounds. We didn't have our parks closed, but we had our playgrounds and exercise equipment in the basketball court. Well, I decided to open them up. We've had, we've had tape around them and we've put signs on the parks. Well, someone has been going routinely, and I mean several times a day. And we don't have the manpower or the time to go constantly put tape up there and chase people away. And we're just going to monitor that. So if we end up getting where there are spikes, or we get a lot of numbers, you know, some different numbers here, then we'll look at doing that and we'll phase that back in.
I agree. I mean, I get, you and I are on the same meetings. And, you know, we have this, they're looking at one of several things. The running two-week average. And we're at like three and a half percent where their goal is 10%. This is for the countywide. And if you look back over the past nine days, there were five of those days there were no new cases.
Right.
Running at one and a half percent in the last nine days. And also, it's not even around the county. This is more of a Palaca-centric outbreak. That's the hotspots is around there. Most of the cases are in Palaca. There are some other places, but they're mainly in Palaca. Their, last I heard, and that was a week ago, there were only two people in the hospital. Now, you know, we were flattening the curve, curves been flattened, curves just slipping down. There are plenty of beds to be had. And we can't close everything up for the next year and a half or two years and stay underground until this, until the last case goes away. I think we still need to be vigilant and wear masks and wash your hands and all of those things. And I think we can safely- Commissioner?
And I agree.
You didn't see, you didn't see the city attorney kissing his dog?
No, I missed that.
That's why, that's why I laughed.
Baby.
Right. Not anything that she-
Certainly, I hope that dog doesn't have COVID. So I'd like to see the playgrounds opened.
Yes. They are open today.
And they're out in the full sun. And, yep, I think it's pretty safe. Any other comments on that? Do you have more on COVID-19?
I don't, unless someone has a question. Commissioner DeVito?
Yeah, I, well, I have some practical questions. What does this mean for our city commission meetings? And, you know, the latest announcement is, you know, city hall's closed, and we're meeting by video, and we're not having any unnecessary meetings, which means, you know, code enforcement board's not meeting, tree board, all planning and zoning. What does this mean for, what can we expect? As far as-
If I could speak on that, Michael. Phase two, we will allow to be meeting in person again. But, you know, and I've been told this before, and it bears listening to it as, even though we're in phase one, it doesn't mean the next logical step is phase two. We could go back to phase zero. So, but the numbers are looking good. And they've got to look good for most of the state to be moved on with Governor DeSantis to declare a phase two. And I think some of the lower counties, the Miami, Dade County areas and so on, have joined us into phase one. So I think things are looking better all the way around. I'm hoping it'll be soon. And as I mentioned at the other meeting we had, the governor was looking at weeks and not months between phases. So hopefully, in the next week or two, we'll go on to phase two.
Okay, and I do have a couple of other questions. So it seems like you're saying we could be meeting in person in June. We might not, we just have to see how that phase two falls, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so something that I heard on one of the Florida Department of Emergency Management calls kind of concerned me. And I didn't know if you and Mr. Esposito had talked about this at any of the emergency management meetings. The Florida Director of Emergency Management, can't remember his name, Moskowitz or something like that, Jared Moskowitz, said that for hurricane season, they might be looking at not opening shelters. He was worried about bringing the public into shelters and then possibly having the spread of COVID. And of course, in our area, we have so many people in trailers and unsafe buildings. I, it just seems to me, I certainly hope that emergency management is going to tell us not to have a shelter because, you know, a couple of years ago, we had someone killed in a trailer. Have y'all heard, have y'all heard any mention of that? That we would be discouraged from having people in the shelter or not opening a shelter?
I heard that same thing. But I don't know if any decision has been made. I have not heard that. It was just, it's a possibility.
Correct. And when they do these things, they have to talk about all these possibilities. One of the things I've been involved in when we do hurricane preparedness and when we go through that, because I've worked several of the hurricanes now over the past several years, you, we just not only get, you get sickness go around in a shelter just without COVID being present. You know, flu and things like that are something that become present. So they become sometimes incubators. And it has to be a concern of emergency management to try to talk about that early now because shelters are so important and vital when you get to this. Last time they were talking about shelters like in Flagler County, and it was shelter in place. Well, with COVID, that brings a whole new, you know, a whole new discussion on maybe we should, you know, people should stop moving well before it's too late to kind of get out of the area when we get these storms coming through. So we'll have more discussions on it. I know the mayor and I, when we talk on emergency management, we'll talk about it.
I guess my bottom line, and I'll be happy to send this to you, an email is, in South County, we're a poor county. We have people who have no ability to evacuate anywhere. I mean, if they're not going to be opening shelter, it seems to me that not opening shelters is just not a good solution for South Putnam, given how many people we have in trailers and other kinds of things, and-
I think that's a county issue and not necessarily a city issue?
Well, it's not our city issue, but I'm saying for our people that live in our area, I think we need to kind of speak up for them and, you know, tell someone, whether it's the county or get the county to tell the state that our poor little area needs some kind of shelter. I mean, I would hate to see us not have shelters, so-
No one's saying that, but I can just imagine that's part of that conversation they're going to have now, you know?
Well, it sounded like they were saying not having shelters. So, you know, I just don't think that works for our area. Right, I know we don't run the shelter.
Right.
Commissioner Banks?
I see the red cross.
Yep.
Run shelters.
We have anything more on the COVID-19 we want to add?
Oh, yes, I have a request. And I'll put this on the mayor. Are you still going to be going to the weekly meetings at emergency management?
Well, I do it online, yes.
Oh, you do it online? Okay.
Tuesdays was canceled, and we have one tomorrow.
Oh, okay. Well, is it possible to do just a little blurb and send it out to the rest of the commissioners and maybe just a little paragraph about what was discussed? Because I find-
We could, those meetings are only about 15 minutes long.
Whatever it is that's the highlights, I'm really curious. I don't know about the other commissioners, but I think it would be really nice to kind of share whatever you feel you could share.
And Mayor, I think you'd agree, the theme of the meetings, the past, and it's all, it's not just the county. It's the cities, the municipalities we have here. Everybody's been involved. The theme of it has been just be vigilant, try to flatten the curve. They're following, it's funny, they're following social media just like we are on where everybody's at and kind of taking it with, between them and the health department. So if we know any big news, like we're switching to a phase two, we will get that information out there.
I get the impression that there's no good news. It seems like, oh, it's still bad, it's still bad. And I see things getting better. And I, you know, I told you, you know, I asked, sometimes one of our reports didn't have the seven-day, or I'm sorry, the 14-day running average, which is one of the metrics for determining going to phase two. And also, they don't have, how many people are actually in the hospital? Tell you. And also, no one ever gets better. There's 127 people. That was a couple of months ago, the first, you know, now, are they still infected? Well, once you're infected, you know, it doesn't mean you're immune, you know? So the numbers are kept up, I think unnecessarily. Just like the, how many people are in the hospital? They'll say 19 or something like that. Well, that's not true. It's two.
Pay attention to the governor. He said that they weren't going to expose that.
Right, I just take it as a total. And then we have, and by the way, I think today's report was there was one more death and one more case, and the case was in the Crescent City zip code. That's what I saw came through.
Somebody said it was just outside the city, or one of the, there were two cases. I thought one of them was just outside the city, but you're right. It's in the zip code.
They get, they get gas here and they probably shop here, so, you know?
True enough. Anything else on that?
I don't have anything else.
Okay, Putnam County tax certificate sale update from Linda Myers. And I guess she's not on, was she going to give that presentation herself?
She is not. Deb has a statement from her that she's going to read.
Okay, okay. Deb, you're on.
Thank you. Again, this is from Linda Myers, Tax Collector. And she writes, first of all, I hope this finds the Crescent City Commissioners and staff healthy. As per our last year's discussion, I wanted to make sure you are aware the delinquent tax certificate sale will be June 1st, which is our usual date. The list of delinquent tax properties is by law published prior to the sale for three consecutive weeks. Yesterday, May 13th, was the first printing of the list. As you are probably aware, this list was as of April 30th, and some of these parcels have had their taxes paid. At the auction sale, bidders normally purchase 80% of certificates by value of the parcels listed in the printed publication, which for Crescent City last year was $40,801. A certificate is an interest-bearing lien on the property and does not convey ownership. However, if the property owner does not pay the certificate holder the taxes and interest due within approximately two years, the parcel can be brought to sale at an auction, which is handled by the clerk of court's office. Interested parties on how to be a bidder at the tax certificate auction might participate in one of the webinars May 20 or the 27th. And if interested to be a bidder, they must complete the registration process by May 22nd. Information listed on the data packet sent earlier on how to register. For information, contact 386-329-0276 or 386-329-0272. As always, it is my pleasure to serve Putnam County and the citizens of your great city. Do not hesitate to contact me. Take care, one and all. Thank you, Linda Myers, Tax Collector.
Very good. Okay, any comment on that, questions or comments? Hearing none. Let's move on to additional reports. Michael, do you have anything else to add?
I do, actually, I will talk about several things, several things that are going on in the city. We talked about communication. One of the things, and I talked about it before I got hired, one of the things that frustrates me is our website. It has frustrated me every day, not being able to put things out there, kind of have to wait. It can't just be thrown up there, it's not that easy. So since I've been here, I've worked on getting us a new website. And I'm going to share what I've done. I've worked with several companies. We finally got a company that just specialized in municipal websites that give us the tools that are going to be able to spread that information out, not just on the website, but also Facebook. And that was one of the comments, okay? So right now, I'm going to show you, I'm going to share my screen and show you what the, right now, it's under construction. And I did not want to throw the website out there live. And I might do that when we're done, to put it up there. And some of the links might not work. But at least you could pay bills and I could put news out there. And this is step one of that process. We still have to finalize it, and then we have to get a little bit of training. And once we're done with that, we'll be able to use it on a daily basis. So, let me close this, if I can share my screen. I'm doing several things here. So here is, here is, if you could see my screen, this is what it will look like now. It's still in a state of flux about links working and information on there. But this is going to be able to give us up-to-date information. One of the things that we'll be able to do right off the bat is continue to do utility. People can pay their bills for utility. We'll be able to get updated information. I don't want to go through the whole website because there's a lot of links and a lot of things I need to update. Just scrolling down, we'll be able to put up whatever information we want. We'll be able to list events. You'll see right now it's COVID information, excuse me, I'm clicking around. One of the really interesting, and I think it's a neat thing that we're going to have, is if you look here where it says stay informed, if you see my mouse, if you put in your name and your email and your phone number, you will be able to get up-to-date information when we post it to the website. So it's kind of like you subscribe to it. If you want to know when the agenda comes out, it will either give you the choice to email you or to text message you. This is a fantastic feature that we will take advantage of. We talked about, one of the comments was also Facebook. In conjunction with this, the same company is developing a Facebook page. And we will be able to simultaneously, when we put something on the website, it will automatically be put on our Facebook page. So we don't have to spend a lot of time on it. We don't have to do double duty as far as putting information out there. So I just wanted to give you a glimpse of it. I'm not ready to put it out there, but like I said, when I do go live with it, probably some of the links won't work, and it's kind of like site under construction. If you can see the ticker at the top, till we can make sure that we update and we refresh our information.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner DeVito?
I, what is the cost of this? And I don't remember that we provided for this in the budget.
I believe we did.
I don't recall that.
We have, we have money, I've talked with our finance director. We're working with this. The cost to do this, to design this whole website with- We have, we have money, we've, I've talked with our finance director, we're working with this. The cost to do this, to design this whole website was $600. To get this level for a municipal website is, is incredible. I've gotten other bids from other municipal design websites and local ones. They were, the other bids came in at $7,000 and $14,000. To get almost the same, you're going to get the same functionality that we're going to get here. The other thing that's included with this, it, every three years, we get a free web design. They can redesign it for us, so we can kind of get a fresh new look.
How much is the maintenance per month or per year?
We pay a monthly fee. That, that is $900. That's a hosting fee, and it's not a shocker. The other hosting fees are double. But that comes with 24-hour help. Anytime we need it. That also comes up with backup services. That was not included in the other companies that I talked to. So we have 24-hour backup of our website when we put information. Right now, if our server goes down, we lose the information we have. That's unacceptable.
Right.
Like I said, that, that, that's a hosting cost that's broke down per month, and I've also broken it down per department, so everybody gets to share. So when we have utility issues, they can on there. We're also going to get as part of this fire and police. So they have their own department pages.
Okay, so I didn't quite catch that. We're paying 900 a month?
No, that's a, that's a total year.
That's the annual amount. Okay, you know, there's, there's a little delay when we're on video. You don't quite catch all of it. Well, that is very reasonable, and I am very surprised because there were estimates of what we discussed in, at great length. The need to have a website. I don't think we ever voted on it or allocated any money for it. But the cost of prior bids or what was discussed was in the, like, well over $5,000 or $10,000.
Correct. And when I saw this, I said, there's no question. I can get this up there. It gives us the tools we need. In for the price that we can afford, because I've been hounded by the other companies, to be quite honest, about getting their business, and they are in the $10,000, you know. $10,000 to design, $15,000 to design, and then their hosting fees are, the closest is $1,800. And we're not going to lease the same services.
Okay, well, so my only question is, what is the catch? Is there a long-term contract or?
Three years, three years. Three years, we get locked into that price for the hosting, and we don't pay any more design. What we pay is we pay a hosting fee, and then we pay for our domains. It's $15. And what that means is the crescentcity-fl.com name.
Now, will each department pay a certain amount to it? The water, sewer, gas?
Yeah, we've done that. We've talked internally about each one paying a portion of that hosting fee. Because they'll be able to put information on the website, and we're working through that.
A mayor.
I see a huge oak tree, so I think tree and garden ought to kick in at least 200.
Enterprise fund.
Commissioner Banks.
I think we got that budgeted in our CRA budget.
That's, that's for a separate item, if you want to do a separate CRA, I believe, separate CRA website.
Which, can this, can it be included?
Well, could this be included in there?
Not with what we, I mean, I can put a webpage up here for CRA. Oh, I can do that. I can edit. That's no extra charge. And just have them. But if you wanted a full-blown website like this, we'd be going through probably the same costs. They might give us a reduction because they already handle one of our websites. So.
Well, to be, Mayor, if I could comment about the CRA issue.
Please do.
Well, I think it's a little premature to do a website for the CRA, because I think content would be an issue. That's actually something I wanted to bring up, just the whole topic. I don't think we really know what we would want to say, and I-
Well, let's table it for now, then.
Right, so, but back to this website. I mean, I think this is lovely, and I think the price is right. But just somehow, as a matter of form, it seems like this would have been a good thing to send out something. I mean, I know we have a new working relationship, so I'm just communicating. To me, it would have been good to send out something saying, this is what we're doing. And what is the name of the company?
Town Web. Town Web.
Town, Town Web.
Right. And we have, we've been, I've been talking about this. I've kind of been like a broken record, I say, about talking to everybody about what, you know, we're planning on this. Now, it's exciting to see. I mean, this just happened, where I've actually got this kind of, it's not live, but it's in this format now. And at least, and when it goes live, I'll be able to put information up there, which is, you know, that will solve a lot of the issues we have.
Something about, I mean, as a matter of form, I mean, I knew you were talking about it. I was very concerned. I didn't know the money that was being spent or what the source would be. And we, even though it's not a huge cost, we are in a three-year contract. So to me, that's something that should be put in writing to the commission as FYI, so that we all get the same information. Because I, I didn't know that much about it, and I really did have concerns. It turned out quite nicely. Thank you.
Right. So one of the things we'll do is, once we do it, then we'll, then we'll, we'll get more information on the full-blown site. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to handle them, once we get live.
Michael, maybe I'm wrong, because I know we talked about it at length. I thought we budgeted some money for a website upgrade. Did we not?
We did not. That was CRA. It was the CRA stuff. So, and like I said, I, when I looked at this and said, we don't have to spend $10,000, because that definitely would have been and how we would go forward in doing that.
I'd like to see a big button on somebody who would consider coming to Crescent City and shows the three bananas and the lakes and why, why Crescent City is such a great place to visit. I know that's probably in your plan.
It is just, and this is not a static thing. It just doesn't stick there. We can, it can be evolved. I can add pages and and add information as we go. So if something new happens or something new, like, you know, you want a visitor page, we could put that.
Okay. Commissioner Banks, did you raise your hand?
I think it's a good idea.
I do too.
Very good. It'd be good for the community and the citizens, and, you know, to get information out of, by paying the bill. That would be one plus.
Right.
Absolutely.
Oh, it looks much better, because the other one I couldn't read. It was too dark.
I know. When I, when I talked to the people, they said, was this designed in, you know, in 1990? You know, that's the comment I get all the time. But that, that worked fine for then, but now this is new, and we're going to go forward, so.
Thank you, Michael. This sounds great.
Okay. All right, we'll move on.
All right. Yeah, I think we're all pleased.
Okay, good. Moving on, we talked about, oh, what, let's talk about water quality issues. I guess we had some water quality issues well before I was here. 2018, we had, and let me pull that information. We had some reports. We had three items that were amounts in the water that, when tested, were either at unacceptable levels at that testing, or they were just higher than normal, okay? Back in 2018, we had 124 tri-chlorobenzene, dolapane, and carbon tetrachloride. Only the carbon tetrachloride was the only one that was unacceptable levels. But it only showed up in that one test. So what the state says is, once you get this, you go on regular quarter, regular quarterly testing. Had the regular quarterly testing now for the past 2018, 19, and 20. We are now, we have outside of those testing, we haven't had anything show up, and everything's in accessible, it's in regular levels of what we have. So what happens now is, once, we just had a court, we just had a test in January, we'll have another quarterly test in the third quarter of this year. After that, we're going to go to yearly testing, and after, I believe it's another year of yearly testing, we go to every three years, for the tri-annual testing for it.
For that particular chemical. Because I think we do quarterly or-
Yeah, quarterly. We're testing for the three of them quarterly. I do water testing anyway, but we get an actual report that says this is what it is. This is one of the things I talked about, our water operator is about putting these reports. Soon as we get them, we'll put them on the new website.
Okay.
If you want to read through, they're very scientific.
Well, and then, Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
This is great news. You and I talked about it, and I would say, to me, this would be something besides the scientific report, to put just a little bulletin on the website saying, good news, we're heading, you know, the testing is good, and maybe even send a press release to the Courier-Journal, just to update people, because I really think, given that we've been advised we need to raise our rates, I think we need to promote what's good and positive, and this is great news. People, people were very upset. You weren't here. People were very upset about the news that we had to have the more testing. It was not totally understood, partly our fault, I think, the way it was communicated. But if we have good news, I think we really need to get it out there, especially to our customers and, you know, people who might want to move here.
Right. And I had said that at my first meeting. Let's champion the positive.
Yeah, but you know, I'm sure-
We don't do enough of that.
The Courier-Journal is always looking for people, I mean, for news about the city.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Go ahead.
I don't have anything else on that.
Okay. Are you done with your report?
I am not. We're talking about several other subjects, so we-
Please go on, continue.
Hopefully a touch on questions that anybody else has. So speed bumps, let's talk about speed bumps. When I talked about the last meeting, I had said that people wanted speed bumps, and we talked about temporary speed bumps. And I told you that my experience with temporary speed bumps, there's several issues that you have with them. And when I talked to the past city manager, he had been looking at doing some permanent speed bumps. We have permanent speed bumps in the city right now. We have, not including the Bay Street Speedblips, we'll call them, on Walnut, they have speed bumps, and they work pretty effectively. If you haven't been out there, you need to ride over them. And that's kind of the model that was supposed to be on Bay Street, and that's the level that they'll come up to. When I talked about it, when you have temporary speed bumps, and I can have the chief chime in on me, chime in, and I've talked to Public Works, when you put temporary ones out there, one, we're going to spend to put temporary speed bumps or speed bumps, we don't have the manpower to shift them all around the city all the time. I don't know how many you're talking, but if we start to go down that road of putting speed bumps, there could be dozens, if you wanted to go that way. One of the issues I've had, and I personally experienced, is you get road damage. We will get asphalt tears. If somebody catches it, and after time, they just wear and they rip our asphalt, we have an issue now where we're trying to get asphalt patches done because we've got issues that we've had utility that we've had to repair. So I did not want to add to the issue of putting a speed bump out there to have it out there two or three days, and next thing you know, we've got an asphalt problem. The other thing that you have is, you put the speed bumps, and I've talked to all the commissioners, you put those temporary ones out there, if people don't like them, they take them. I don't think we want to be in the speed bump buying business. When I talked about doing, like, the model that's on Walnut and doing that profile of a speed bump, I talked to Public Works, I've talked to our police chief, and we were getting together about making some, talking about strategically where we should start with them. Even if we had temporary ones or permanent ones, we don't want to start littering the city, and not really littering, but peppering them all over the city, and everybody gets upset about them. I know I've talked to the commissioners about public input. I think we've located one or two locations that I think makes sense right now, and then people get used to them. And then we can have another discussion about, okay, where else do we want to put them? Because here's the thing, if you put them on a, and I'm going to give you an example, and I've had this feedback before. So we put them on the street, we have two stop signs, and you put a speed bump out there. Strategically or logically, it's two feet from someone's driveway. People are gonna, they have a love-hate relationship, and some of them are going to hate it because they're going to have to slow down or back over one when they go in their driveway. Now, I'm not saying to do that, but if you want to start putting them where everybody complains about speeding, you might end up with that situation.
Yeah, well, let me add, and you and I have talked about this, and I've talked to the chief about this. We have certain areas, certain streets where people complain about speeding, and I hear them, and I think they should be heard. And we have a way of putting a device, chief has it, and it'll track people's speed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And we can see if there's a legitimate speeding issue there. Some people just, they say somebody drive 25, and they swear that they're driving 35 or 40. So we don't want to put a speed bump there, spend the money, when legitimately, there is no no actual problem with speeding. So, hard about it.
And just to add to that, that's part of the criteria. It's not just somebody complaining about it, or we haven't witnessed it, or they have, the chief can expound on it. Just like you said, Mayor, we've talked about it at length in saying, let's put some criteria to it, and not just plop them down all over the place. One of the issues, and you can't ignore it, is Grand Rondo. I do the speed limit there, but I know when people get up to speed, they're, they're not doing, they come off 308, they're not, you know, they start out at 25, but they're not finishing at 25 sometimes. And that's an area where I recognize saying, well, there's an area we can put it where people can't go around it, because there's a certain part, the park is open, and they can just go around it all day long. I don't suggest putting them there. But there's a couple of, there's one or two other locations where it does not impact someone's driveway, and it's enough to be a speed deterrent.
Okay. You have a question, Commissioner DeVito?
Well, I have some observations. For one thing, this was supposed to be a pilot program. I looked it up in the prior minutes after we talked. And what we put in was $10,000. Right, we put in $10,000. So how many of the permanent speed bumps, because they're quite a bit more expensive, can we get for $10,000?
Right now, I've got asphalt costs in. So the other thing is, let me, let me hold that for a second. When you put in any kind of humps, there's also signage that goes with that. So there's a cost that goes along with that, too.
Right.
But averaging about $2,000.
Wait, for the-
Permanent asphalt.
For the permanent asphalt speed bumps, right. What Mr. Kennedy said, and he researched, and I don't know where this movable stuff came from. But he said there was a type of speed bump that he basically described as semi-permanent, that it would not be as expensive to remove. He didn't, he never said that it was to be moved around. That got said later. It was to see if people liked it and they were effective, because if you put the asphalt ones down, as I understand it, it's very expensive to remove, correct?
It's not really expensive to remove.
To remove, okay.
No, but once again, that's where I was saying, let's start with one, maybe two, be strategic about it, be smart about it, and put it in an avenue that we know that we have a definite issue, that the chief has witnessed it, and start there.
Well, just, I have this to say about, you know, how we're going to choose where they're put. Obviously, we need the chief's expertise and the fire chief's expertise. But I really think that it is somewhat insulting to the citizens of Crescent City to not ask them where they see the problems, and it might even be helpful to have a workshop or submit written comment. And I would like to share with you that I, two days ago, and I told the mayor about this, and I called it in, and I haven't had a chance to write to the chief yet, I witnessed someone on my street going literally 45 to 50 miles an hour, starting at Central Avenue, going south, punching it as hard as they could so that by the time they reached the church, I am sure they were going 45 or 50 miles an hour, and they did not even make a pretense of stopping at a stop sign. They were treating that road as a raceway as well. This, I'm not the only one who's seen it. The person who did it did it right in front of me, standing on the curb, waiting to step out. They knew they were being witnessed. As well, people have that high rate of speed on Prospect. I'm not the only one who has seen these things. And we also have people who use, this is an idea, they use the residential streets to drive- to drive through town when they're not even necessarily stopping, as opposed to the highway. So, to me, I think, instead of the city just deciding where they think they should go in, that it would be courteous to the residents who are putting up with this speeding, at least get their input, so that the whole thing can be assessed, because it takes more than one set of eyes to be on this.
Correct.
I don't want to quote, "plop them all over the city." I don't, I totally agree with you. You don't want to put a speed bump necessarily between two stop signs, but I do want to get people's input as to where the problems are, and then see, maybe you put the speed bump in a different location to deter people from coming onto that street. I think we need to hear from people. We're spending their money. We need to hear from them.
Right.
Trust me, on this issue, people do not feel listened to, because I am hearing it.
Let the chief chime in, like, like the mayor said, to add to his point. And I said it before, we're going to have some criteria for what we do. We're just not going to just put them down willy-nilly. We will get.
Not suggesting that.
Oh, no, I know, but. People might say that.
Let Michael speak, please.
Chief, what, can you chime in here?
You kind of spot on, as the mayor and the manager said, yeah, we, you need some kind of criteria. And I understand what you're saying. There is a lot of complaints about speeding, Rondo, Prospect, but there is criteria, as the mayor directed me to go ahead and start getting some statistics up, so that we can present it to you, where we don't, like you said, put them willy-nilly and all that. And there are things, and I don't want to insult anybody, but there are misperceptions about certain places where people are speeding and they're not, and most people will tell you that they can judge speed. And I get that. If you tell them that you don't think they can, you got to go to class, you can, you can insult them, and I don't want to do that by any means. But there are some areas where, you know, you could speed, and we've done studies, and I'll give you this, Prospect, we've hit Prospect hard. Was a major complaint when I got here. And if you're standing on the roadway on Prospect, 25, and you don't know how to judge it, it looks fast. Okay. When, in fact, a lot of the studies are done, or when you've looked at it, it's not. So, I agree, we need to do some study, and we need people's input, absolutely. I was directed by the manager and the mayor to go ahead and get with the Public Works Director and the Fire Chief, because they're out there just as much as we are. And then, that's, I agree, and that's the basis we need to go on. I'll listen to anybody, and when I get to my, to my report, there were some new things that I got hit on that was, you know, new to me, not brought up to me. Things changed. I was told one thing, things change another. So, yeah, I do agree with the manager that we do need to be cautious on it, because not everybody likes these bumps, too. You're going to have to remember that. When you get these put in, you're also going to get the complaints from the people who don't like them. I went through it also. But, yeah, we do need to be strategic about it, and you want to get the input of people, that's fine, but one, and one speeder down, Commissioner DeVito, I understand you're upset, but just a couple of days ago, at the Crescent City Connection Meeting, as we said, you told me you didn't have any problems. So, I, this must have happened afterwards.
Five minutes after the meeting, yes.
So, to hit the police department on that, when I'm told there's not a problem one minute, and there is the next, so you see what I'm saying? Yeah. There's always a spike. Whenever you put these machines out, there's somebody who's going to want, that's why we'll set a criteria. We'll turn that machine off if you hit maybe 20 over the limit, so that they won't try and spike it and screw your numbers and all that, but.
Okay. You, everybody is missing my point. You are missing my point completely. There is nothing mutually exclusive about using professional standards as to where exactly you place the speed bump. What I am saying, and I do apologize, yes, I spoke too soon. I walked out of my house after the connection meeting. That was when I had the experience with the basic solo drag racer, and my neighbors told me that this is happening a lot. So, yes, we don't want to quote, "plop them all over the city." We don't want people drawing an X on the road and that place. What I'm trying to say is, these are not mutually exclusive concepts. I do, I simply think that it is very advisable to get input from citizens as to where they are needed and why, and as well, where people don't want them. I just think it is basic common courtesy, since we are spending the people's money to solve a problem for the people, that we do them the courtesy of gathering the input and then.
I think that goes without saying, and I think we all agree with that.
Okay, but they're saying they don't want to gather the input, they want it done professionally.
I don't think anyone said that. I don't think anyone said.
No, if I did, I didn't mean to say that, Mayor.
Oh, well, that's what it sounded like. So, all I'm saying is, I want to gather input from the public, so that that can go into the mix. It's definitely a mix.
I didn't hear nobody say that they didn't want to gather information myself.
Well, every time I said I want to, I think we should gather information from the public, all I heard was, "No, no, 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 no. You can't put them here, you can't put them there, you can't." I'm not saying people should choose. I'm saying we should solicit input. That's all. If you're going to, then I'm, I think that's perfectly appropriate in the way it should be done. But it was not stated clearly.
Right.
What else do we have?
What else do we have? Okay, catfish art. Let's talk catfish art at Evil Lion Park. Mayor brought up how the beautiful catfish art had been looking a little, little dingy, needly sprucing. I, since that meeting, I contacted the artist, Sam Knowles. He came out this week and did a little cleanup, did a little varnish, made him look all nice and pretty. And want to go take a look at him? See how it looks?
I drove my golf cart over there. I could smell it, turpentine, whatever, something.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see a lot of difference.
Well, what happens is, when you do the dark varnish, you get that look. And it's, it's probably going to have to happen every several years. I had this commissioner, was it Commissioner West? We had that conversation?
Yes.
About, that's going to need to be.
It's going to weather.
Right.
Okay. Well, I thought it'd be freshened up with a little sanding, a little, you know, it looks pretty much the same. Okay.
Okay. Um, also, just some other news. Angel Duke from the Lions Club contacted me and said the USDA was working with the Lions Club International about having food distribution here in Crescent City. I thought they were targeting May, our last conversation was, they're looking more like June, possibly July, having a big semi come out here and hand out, you know, 1,500 boxes, bags of food. So, I'm just touching base and giving the info now. Next month, hopefully, we'll have more information, and we could possibly have that going before our next meeting. So, she's going to keep me up to date on that.
Okay.
Well, can I?
Yes, sir.
Was doing that to the Women's Civic Association around the lake there, and then they moved it out to Union Avenue to the church out there.
Are they doing it for the USDA?
I, I think so.
Okay.
Feed America, somebody, yeah. Big semi will come out there.
Yeah, I've been involved the last couple of years where they did, you know, Feed Putnam, and they've come out and run it at the Government Services Center. We've handed out food, so it'd be a great thing to do here. I'll, well, I'll touch base with you, Commissioner Banks, about what they're doing at the Women's Club.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, they used to do it, and then they moved it out, outside the city, out there to the, I call it the OYMC, it was the church.
Yeah.
South Putnam.
Right.
Okay.
That's what I had on that. We talked about the governor's flags. And we'll let the chief talk about his new shiny toy. I shouldn't say it's a new shiny toy, but he can, he can weigh in on that when it's time for his report. Also, and I addressed it before, we've got several patches to do of asphalt in the city, and I talked about it before, and we're working on that. We got some bids, and now we've got it. We've got a contractor. For a while, it was hard to just even get a contractor to come here with all the COVID stuff. So, now we have that, and we'll be working to patch those.
Okay.
Other than that, somebody else has a question we can talk about when they have their comments, but.
Let me start. The food truck disposition, and you and I talked briefly about that. It's a, what kind of permit do you call it? A.
Well, okay, so, when I, when we talked about food trucks, since I've been here, I think the understanding is, we did not have a food truck ordinance, and I'll let Jay talk about it more. We actually have a mobile food truck ordinance on the books.
Oh, we do?
Yeah. And we do, and there are conditions, and it's not that you can just roll up with a truck, open it up, and start serving food. It is tied to a whole bunch of things. It's almost like going through planning and zoning. You have to have a certain conditions met. Once you do that, then there's a conditional unit, conditional use, one-time permit fee. It is some advertising, and then there's an annual fee.
Okay.
If you want to expound on that?
No, the, that's what I didn't understand about the, when the subject came up, seemed like we forgot that we had an ordinance such as that. It was pretty well thought out by the commission years ago. They thrashed it out at a number of meetings. You have to, you have to put it in a commercial zone with the owner's permission, has to be written consent, and you have to get a permitted through City Hall with a conditional use. I thought it was pretty good. It gives the city control of the situation. Now, if the city wants to broaden that or tighten it up more, that, that's fine. We can, we can look at that, whatever.
I wouldn't mind adding Market Square, maybe, or considering that as a possible location. But we have it on the books, okay. Commissioner DeVito, please.
Thank you. Wasn't the whole startup this, that we had, I forget her last name, her first name was Edna?
Edna, yeah.
Became, and she specifically was asking us, could we lower the fee?
Yeah.
I thought that was her request, and I thought the mayor said we should look at that. And I've heard through the grapevine that she's left us. That was, I thought that was her whole issue. And I remember Jay explained we had an ordinance. It was the fee that was the problem for her.
Correct.
You, one thing to consider is the effect it has on other businesses, where Three Bananas or the hot dog stand that's over on Central and Summit, or where, you know, Spankies, what have you, are paying one fee, and somebody could roll in in a vehicle and pay less and have less overhead, and, and really hurt our brick and mortar businesses, and we don't want to do that.
That was, that was the big complaint when we were working on it before. The restaurants in regular buildings had so much overhead, and they could come in and sell the same food for half the price. So, we put some restrictions on it.
Right. So, Mayor? I absolutely agree, and I get that part. And, you know, there's also the issue of, you know, bathrooms, a place to wash your hands, but it was my understanding that she came before us, and Mayor, I can swear that you were the one that said, could we look at whether it was possible to lower the fee? So, it seems, Commissioner Banks, am I not right about that?
That's true.
Okay.
Absolutely correct.
All right. So, where does that leave us?
Where we were.
Me, to me, it leads you, the commission, the commission has, has the absolute ability to change the ordinance if, if you feel like $200 is exorbitant. Keep in mind, though, and this is what the commission wrestled with years ago. You take El Amigo as an example. I know the, the El Amigo people, and I know they paid good money for that real estate and that little shop that they sell out of.
Yeah.
Now, do you think that it, it's right to let five other taco trucks come around that highway there? That it's in a commercial zone? I don't care. All you have to do is pass an ordinance to make it $50, if you think $200 is too much to charge somebody to set up a business?
Well, it wasn't my idea to look at the fee in the first place. I'm kind of saying, if we're not all interested in lowering the fee, why are we talking about it? And maybe this would be something either to do a workshop on or to make an inquiry of the existing restaurants. Would they have any objection? You know, can we put a limitation on it? But it just doesn't seem like we've done the research to get ourselves even farther along. I'm not the one that said, "Do anything about this."
Well, you know, I considered, I asked some questions, and as far as I'm concerned, the issue is closed.
Well.
To do a workshop, I, you know, if somebody else besides Edna wants to do this, I mean, you know, the place that opened up a hot dog shop, selling hot dogs and a couple of other things, chips in a bag and a soda, they paid the fee. They're making a go of it. And, you know, the other thing to consider is, I give a discount to somebody who's going to come in here and open the doors on the van and sell, you know, hot dogs and hamburgers and sodas, and then an hour later, they're going to close the doors and head out of town, and there goes the city money.
But, like I said, was it, I didn't say, I didn't say, "Look at it," so, you know, I just wonder.
Done here, then.
That it's closed. Okay, it's closed. All right. All right. But has anyone spoken with the woman who first came before us and inquired about it?
No.
No, I haven't.
Okay. Just checking.
What else do we have on the agenda?
How is it? Next is, if the city attorney wants to give any kind of report.
We added Main Street to the city manager's topics.
I did. I've touched on it. The basic premise is, if you want to go forward with it, I need to get the information, so we can put all that through. And if the commission wants to go through with it, they can vote on it and say that we want to go, go ahead. I don't have any information to share on it, because it wasn't shared with me. And, and once it's done, if it's given to me, the next meeting, we could present it, or in the interim.
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, to me, it's a very beneficial program, but it's competitive. It's something we have to apply for. I think there was a miscommunication. Of course, we've had all this COVID stuff, which is enough to confuse everything. But it, to me, the most appropriate person to do the research and to contact the, I just heard a noise in my house, excuse me. I hope it was the cat. The most appropriate person to look into it, to me, is the city manager. I mean, are you saying you want the Department of State to contact you, or you want?
No, what I was saying was, it sounded like from that public comment, that someone, a lot of research that did not share that with me. I don't want to duplicate those efforts. I want to make sure we're on the same page, and I am working on it. But once again, they're talking to a different person than I'm talking to, so I want to make sure we're on the same page. So, if I get that information for what that person's been talking to, then I will follow up with it, and I'll present it to the board, I'll present it to the commission.
If it was Michelle, can, can, can you have her get, get with the city manager and share that information? Apparently, she has a point of contact.
Right. I guess, Mayor, if I could, I just, to me, I've always thought Main Street was a good idea, and just for about 10 years, I've wanted Crescent City to do this for a long time, but I don't know what the other commissioners think. I mean, to me, I think if, I think it would be great for us to make the June application deadline, but I don't know if Commissioner West and Commissioner Banks share that view.
I'm with you.
Well, I do think we need more information on it. I don't want to throw my line in the lake and don't know what's out there.
It's, it's like Deland, possibly. I mean. It's, it's like delaying possibly. I mean.
If we go by what somebody else say, we need to get the person in charge of it and talk with them. And I think we're trying to do it the right way. Let our city manager check and maybe he can get with Michelle and find out who that she dealing with. So he can get the information.
Right, I mean.
Not us just sit up here and call, what somebody else is saying, that's not right.
Right.
Sound fair enough?
Absolutely. I, I think the manager is the guy to do it. But to me, I mean, I, I think we should make our best effort.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it, it, it's, it's, it really would be something good to have.
Yeah.
But we need to go back the right way.
Right.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, I have something that I think really falls under the city manager. I wrote myself a note about it. I didn't ask for it to be on the agenda, but it's, it's pretty, I mean, are we, is the fire chief going to be here by any chance? No.
Not that I know of.
But he can be, but not today.
There is an issue that I have become aware of in the last couple of days that I would love for the city manager to take under advisement. Can I just briefly share what that is?
Are we talking about the city people burning in the city?
Yes.
That is something that we can handle and, and part of it is public information getting it out there because I don't think people are aware if they, they want to burn in the city, they need to get a permit.
Right, well, as you all know, there's, there have been fires in the Panhandle. There's now huge fires down in the Cape Coral area. And I saw on social media today from the, from the sheriff's office, there was a huge fire in Satsuma. There are two lots in the past week right in the city, residential lots, one on Magnolia, where they burned a lot. And then today, I was riding my bicycle and there was burning right there on Bay Lane at Grand Rondo. There was a, Ms. Taylor went by, there was a hot stump. And I think the fire department also, I called it in, the fire department went. So to me, I think it's very important to let people know that they cannot burn in the city without a permit because that's two in one week and small lots.
Were you posted that on social media, did you not?
Pardon?
I, I did.
Hold on, Harry, one minute, please. It was already posted on social media, was it not, that you needed? And I commented on that too, that you need a permit to burn in the city.
Right, but I.
What's out there?
Right, but to me, I think it's better if it comes from the city, not, not just me.
Not just the mayor.
Well, the mayor would be the best. But I mean, I think on our website, whatever means we have to get it out, I, it's important.
Harry, please, go ahead.
Mayor, Commissioner, I think we have something on record about that. We visited that one time before and we came up and, and I, I don't know that the size of the power that you could burn. I take, I came up, the fellow what got that big oak tree on Grand Rondo that, with all them limbs spread it out. He was burning and it came up from that. Somebody citizen in that area called in. And I think now, I had to go back and check the record and, and I think we addressed it as a body.
Yeah, you did.
But we, we have an ordinance, but people don't seem to know about it. You have to have a permit. There's no, no burning yard trash without a permit. But there's been two in the past week where they don't seem to know about it. So all I'm saying is, we have drought conditions and it just seems like we need to get the word out.
Yeah, maybe we need.
Chief Carmen, is that something you can let your guys know? Keep an eye out for people burning and, and make sure that they have a permit.
Yes, sir. I rode by there today just to see, know what I would be talking about. I looked at it and it looked like someone did burn recently. I talked to Sergeant Ward about it today. He's notified all his members, all the staff. So, yeah, we can keep on, I think it's, the manager's right, it's an educational thing. We get some public service announcements out there because I don't think people knew about it in the dry conditions we were under right now. So.
Okay.
We can keep an eye out.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mark, what else we have?
You ready for me to?
Am I? Mark, are you done?
Mike or Mark, Mayor?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mike. Michael.
We're done. It's next if the chief, I guess, if the city attorney doesn't have anything.
I have just one, one item to comment on during your discussion. Ms. DeVito is, is correct. I would like to know if in fact the commission, and I don't recall. I remember y'all were discussing it, but did the commission authorize or instruct the city manager to develop or work on a website? If you did, that's fine. If it's in the record in the minutes. If that authorization or go-ahead is not there, I do think that, that the commission should formally okay or approve or direct or whatever you want to do. Give him the, the instruction to, to do that because he is spending some money and I don't want that just on him.
Understood. Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Do we want to put a budget on it? $2,000?
Well, don't forget, he said $900 a year for three years too. So, that, but that's a separate, you might want to instruct him to develop it for less than $1,000 or up to $1,000 and, and then instruct him to enter into a maintenance group, whatever.
Does that sound workable? Will that work for you, Michael?
It will.
Do you need more money than that?
Um, I think with, probably a little, we've got some domains. You know, the, like the crescentcity-fl.com.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Fees. I don't see that more than $200, more than the 900. I don't see any.
$1,500, just to cover any extemporaneous.
That would be fine.
$1,500 as a motion to move forward with a website, a new website.
Not to exceed over $1,500, correct.
$1,500. That's your motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
I do have one question. So has a, has a contract already been signed? Are we?
An agreement. We've done an agreement. Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And, and you know, when we did interviews and so on, let, let's not, you know, one of my main ones, and I'm, I don't think I was alone, was we, we wanted a new website developed. So let's just not get caught up in the minutia, minutia here. We have a proper motion, a proper second. Roll call, please, Deb.
Commissioner Kane DeVito.
I.
Commissioner Banks. Commissioner West.
I.
Mayor Peterson.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. I, I think that's all. I don't think I'm behind on anything I'm supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that up. Is that all you have, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I guess you all have a question or something.
Anyone have a question for Jay?
Not this month. I think, I think I have a question, but I can wait till next month.
All right. Are we going to move on to the police report? And if we're going to have a virtual meeting next month, I'm, I would like to see us have, because it is virtual, have the chief do it up front, somewhere up front so he can get home. Go ahead, chief, you've got the floor. Unmute yourself.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. You don't have to let me go home early. I'm going to go ahead and change up my report a little bit because we're virtual and some of the things changed. So I'm changing my routine a little bit. I got some questions that came in that I wasn't aware of and some of my, some problems I knew. And I've said this before at a bunch of meetings, you don't have to wait for a commission meeting to bring up something that is festering or upsetting you because then you vent. You can call us, we're, you know, day or night, give us a call. Mister, I believe his name was Boothie. That's the first time I've ever heard from him. So we'll address his issues. Anything brought up to us, we'll address them. Do we got some work to do? Yeah, I guess we do. I thought we were doing pretty good. I'll address the noise complaints in a minute, but I want to, I want to talk real quick about some of the things the department member's been going through with the, the virus and how they've been handling it. And I'm going to start off, heard some complaints, some that need to be addressed. But I also want to say how extremely proud I am of this police department, how hard they're working. And sometimes maybe, you know, I got to have a little thicker skin. Sometimes I take offense to some of these, some complaints when, let me start off with the virus. We've been dealing with the COVID-19 virus and adhering to all the protocols set forth by the health department, going under the governor's orders. We've been following the procedures set forth by the sheriff's office on when we're doing our calls for service. We're maintaining the same protocols they are, are. We've made sure all our department members have been gloved, had the proper mask, eye protection. It hasn't always been easy because the EOC's been short. We've got them from other sources, one being one of our own patrolmen's dad's company who graciously donated masks to us. So we're a family here. I'm extremely proud of these guys. Four of our members, for a week, we were down four members. I want to bring that to your attention. Four members put their lives on their line because they were quarantined because of the COVID. So my, I just want to bring that to everybody's attention, everybody who's listening. When you're with basically a seven-man department, you're four men down for a week. I thought we did a pretty good job. One of the things on the noise complaints, I thought we did really well. Evidently it's acting up again, but it's not being ignored. It's a generational behavior. One of you said you would, your grandmothers would deal with that. That's what we're dealing with. We had it knocked down to about 90% of a decline. I guess it's popping back up again, so we're going to have to work on it. So these things just need to be brought to our attention. Ordinances, ordinances needed teeth. Somebody also said, Tim, great officer, went out there and cleared up a noise complaint. It was like a parking lot. Well, let me keep in mind, Tim is one officer, 30 or 40 men. It's not an easy task. My hat's off to him. He's got guts. Okay, you guys got to realize that. All right. This is not just Crescent City, it's Putman County. The noise complaint Commissioner West talked about the other day was Putman County. They had to do their best to get it taken care of. Tim, Tim broke it up, as does any other officer. They move around, we do our best. We're trying, you may want to think about, and it's one of my complaints since I got here, you may want to think about beefing up your police department. Because a lot of times we can only have one guy out. When we get hit and we lose four men, there was a weekend here on day shift, I was by myself. So my hat's off to these men. I'm extremely proud of them. Their crime rate down in the last year was 61%, unheard of, unheard of statistics. Okay, we're number two in the state in the county on that. All right. So, yeah, I will address these complaints. I will apologize for them. But I will praise these men and I will stand up for these guys. And to hear something that they're ignoring it, I'm going to tell you right now, Mayor, that eats me up. I don't believe in it. I don't like it. I don't appreciate it. These guys are working hard. They're shorthanded. They care. They live in this community. And to come back to work after being tested for something scary as COVID, let's give them a little applause and a little, come on. I mean, I can't ask for any more of them. I'm, I'm proud to be their chief. The complaints, the noise complaints, yeah, we'll, we'll start addressing them again. We're, we're looking at options of any way we can to beef up the manpower. Sergeant Ward has adjusted his schedule so that he can be out almost like a swing shift, so he can have two guys on at a time. So we're trying. I just want you guys to know that. We're trying. I'll get off my soapbox now and go over some other stuff. Mr. Asbury, you made a good point. You know, every, we have to listen to everybody. Some of the complaints that came in, I think there was like six or six, seven complaints, four of which were made by one person, right? The 1,600 people who live in Crescent City, okay? We cannot just go if one person's unhappy. Okay, okay? So we have to work with everybody. We got to do what we can. Again, we're fighting generational behavior. It's maybe more getting back out there, getting back into the public. During this virus, we lost some of our getting out and touching, getting out community policing because social distance and didn't allow us to do what we used to do. We were doing patrols on Summit and we would go into the businesses every day. We still did that. We wanted to let everybody know we were still out there and that we were still coming in and the police department didn't go and hide on you. Yes, we had to close our doors because it was state guidelines. When we could no longer go into some of these businesses because they were closed, such as the banks and the ones that are on Central or had to be, take safety precautions, I seen our guys waving by and waving. They were still seen. So my hat's off to these guys. They're doing a good job. Like I said, they put their lives on the line. They're trying, so. With that, Mayor, I'll go on with some other cases. Just making sure I covered everything I wanted to respond. I hope I responded to everybody's complaints. You know, one I keep hearing about the Parker House. Parker House, we've been hitting it hard. They've been closed for, I don't know, a good eight, eight weeks now. I spoke, I spoke to the owner, asked him if he had any complaints with us. He said, no, he hasn't seen any of the noise. Now, when we move them and they move to someplace else, we have to deal with it. Mayor, I think me and you spoke several times about the noise on, on the motor vehicles. And it's, there is nothing we can do about it. It's not a Crescent City problem. It's a statewide problem. You know that. It's legislative until they get off their butt and go ahead and change that law for us. We cannot make that a, a primary offense. I cannot stop you because you're playing your music. People are upset with us. I wish I can change the law to make you happy. I can't. Okay? It happens where I live. It happens when I talk to other police officers. They're all unhappy, Mayor. I know you talked to the legislative with the bat for us and thank you for it. But these are some things we can help and some things we can't. Drafting an ordinance that is unenforceable is not going to help us. So maybe if you do want to have a workshop, I'm fine with it. Come up with some ideas. Give us some solutions. With that, I'll go over somebody, somebody else's things. I said, hopefully we can open the doors when the state tells us and we can get back there and get a little more normal. One of the things I know the city manager wanted me to talk about and the mayor was, we did, we're trying to beef up our fleet. So we went ahead and bought a new, not a new, to us it's new. We got ourselves our hands on a 2014 fully loaded Dodge Charger for $7,000. This car is in great condition. It's in great shape. It came fully loaded with the cage, the light bar, the radio, all equipment. All we had to do was go to the sheriff's office, change it over into Crescent City's name and we, we put a Band-Aid on a fix in one day. So you'll see that car out there. All that has to be done now is we're waiting on some, you know, a monthly budget and we'll probably mark it up so we can get some more presence out there. I'll have to fight with the sergeant and some of them guys on the coloring, but we'll work on it. I'll have to fight with the sergeant and some of them guys on the coloring, but we'll work on it. Other than that, um, is there anything else or any other questions?
Anybody?
I'd like to make a comment. Well, Chief, I, I'm one thinking the police department do a wonderful job. I observe and I see that you are so right. You are so right, me being an officer, one time in my life, uh, in the same city here. You can't cover a whole town with one man. I, I understand that. And I know you were, uh, yeah, it got down so where you were pulling one shift yourself. I call that sincere dedication. So my hat goes off to our police department and the leader of our police department.
Absolutely. Thank you, absolutely. And, and you know, Chief, uh, it may sound like we're frustrated and I, and we are. But I know you're frustrated too. And, uh, people are coming to us complaining and so on. And I know, and I think the rest of us know, you guys are doing what you can. And it's not as easy as it seems like on TV. Where you go in there and bust them heads and throw them in the back or something like that, I don't know. Uh, you can't. Um, it's a very tough job and, uh, we appreciate what you guys are doing.
And I, I appreciate that, Mayor, and I'm sure the guys, and it'll be related, and if they can listen to it, I'm sure they will. These are dedicated men and women. I mean, we have a six man department and we've been steady for a year. I've got friends that are police chiefs all over the state, they are looking for officers. Okay, we are lucky to have the guys we have. We are lucky that they're not being picked up by the county because they are being heavily recruited. And the last thing I want to do, Sergeant Ward wants to do, is to lose one of these guys and have to train somebody all over again. When, um, I'm, you know, I don't want to sound offensive, yes, we got some work to do and we're willing to do it. But I also would be remiss if I didn't praise them and I appreciate everything you guys are saying. And one of the things I, I'm going to give you, for instance, even the state attorney is helping and working out with us. Because, um, I changed my format, I'm not, I'm not going to say any names, but we had an individual, we've arrested three times for breaking into cars. Three times she got bailed out. We caught her again. Now, we, we, we did ask the public to help us and some of the people that were victims, and they did. They called the state attorney, the state attorney was great, not only did they put a warrant out, they revoked previous bail. So we just picked her up on a warrant and that's going to stop some of the crime. We're working with the state attorneys, we're working very well at the sheriff's office, who they are also shorthanded. Uh, they're trying to recruit, they're having the same problems we're having with noise complaints, not at Long Station, um, right down here just outside of town. Now, the party, it was a joke because one of our officers got accused of being it, but he actually went down there and, uh, assisted the county with it. So I appreciate the nice comments, I want to let you know the guys are trying, um, and they do care. To, 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 I will go up against anybody who tells me these guys are not trying, I don't care. Go out there with them on midnight and do what they do. And then, um, then maybe I'll back down a little bit. But that's about all I got to say. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, um.
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Chief, first of all, I, I don't think you have anything to be defensive about. And I hope you don't equate public comments of frustration with the commission being frustrated because you are a great chief, you've saved us tons of money. And your officers are wonderful and you have trained them. So we understand that. I understand that the public is frustrated because they don't see change. And I think it's our responsibility as a commission, um, to try to explain to people. I think it's very important to communicate with the public that we're going to work on the problem. Um, I don't want to tell people that there's no problem. One thing, I mean, just because something is not the way we want it, doesn't mean that it's the police department's fault. One thing I've said to you for a long time is that the city on the civil side, we need to help you as much as we can. And Mr. Asbury got kind of put out with me when I said it kind of needed, um, a three-part staffing. Um, I didn't mean a big report, but I mean looking at the problem. And if we can't do anything about noise and cars, I, and, you know, I understand that very well. But we may need to look at, um, other ordinances relating to our codes. I mean, I think this is going to take a multi-part effort and it, we can't expect the police department to do it all. So, um, I think a workshop might be a good idea, um, to let people know that we want to listen and, um, looking at what other cities do. Uh, because I think if we work on speeding, um, if we, you know, work on some code issues and make it less attractive, um, to have these big parties or whatever, that may get us where we want to be. But I, I don't think that you should take discussion of a problem as saying that it's the police department's fault because we all need to address this. And yes, it's been a problem for a long time, so we need, we need to look outside the box and see what we can do. But yeah, you guys are wonderful. We have probably the best police department we've had in years and I'm, I think we're all thrilled about that. So.
I appreciate that, ma'am, I appreciate you saying, and, and we are, we are, we are not, we are trying to make change. Uh, Mr. Esposito's, um, his perfect example is the website. Um, one of my biggest complaints when I got there, and I've never got to it, and he's already adjusting, he's getting a website and he's including the police department on it, I'm extremely grateful, Mr. Esposito, because now we can put stuff out there that we've been wanting to do. And, um, it, it's, it's tough because there are a lot of stuff that we wanted to do and we were making some headway. And now we're putting up with this coronavirus and hopefully that'll be over soon. Um, we, we get out and we can get up and walk out and, 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 and face to face and get out and talk to people again. It's frustrating for us to sit in here. I've heard, I've, I've heard from a couple, and it, and if I found offensive, it's only because I'm proud of these men. I, believe me, I've been doing this for thirty-four years, I've been beat up a lot worse than, than tonight. But these guys are trying and when they can get out there and get out there and do some community policing and get some, um, back to normalcy maybe, um, we'll make some headway. Um, we're, we're not, um, we're not ignoring any of this and, and sometimes maybe it's coming across to us as that. And, um, I don't want them to feel that I don't have their back or their, the sergeant doesn't have their back. And that, that's all I'm trying to express to you. Or that the commission don't have the back, we know you do, and, and Mr. Asbury. And, um, so, you know, my heart goes out to you, sir.
Thanks, Chief. If I could just speak for a minute on, you know, here we are, we started with, uh, National Law Enforcement Week, which will be the, uh, the tenth through the sixteenth. And, and you touched on Tim breaking up one of those parties and, and that probably happens several times a week with different officers. And, you know, it takes, you know, it's nighttime, you're by yourself, you know there's firearms out there, illegal firearms. And, uh, you've got a wife and kids at home. And you're doing the job for the city, you know? It's that thin blue line that, that keeps society up and that's what the police officers do. And, uh, uh, we have to realize that.
Yeah, yep, he's my second friend.
You're in your home with your locked door and you make a phone call and somebody has to go out there and, and break it up. So, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you, sir. Uh, I'm sure they'll appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Manager, um, unless there's any other questions?
Any other questions for the chief?
No, just, um, just, I think, I just want to say to your force, thank you very much and profoundly grateful that everybody turned out to be well.
Well, thank you. Uh, uh, and I'll relay that to them.
Thank you very much.
Make sure that your officers know that we do appreciate them and thank each one for all the hard work they do. We really, really do appreciate them and you.
Thank, thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, I guess we'll move on to commission comments. Uh, anyone want to bring up anything?
I, I have one thing I want to bring up. Due to the time, I, I'm, I'm kind of like Commissioner DeVito, I, I'll wait till next week, next, next meeting. No, I'll wait till next meeting.
Commissioner DeVito?
Yep, um, just a couple of things that I hope we can see at the next meeting. The tree and garden board in February, back when life was normal, did, um, come up with something that's required in chapter eighteen. Um, a tree and garden plan for the public property of the city, including the median. Um, it's supposed to be approved by the commission, so I'm hoping that, um, the city manager can get that shared and it can be on the agenda. We really haven't had, uh, an agenda discussing the CRA for a while. I kind of think we need to have a CRA meeting and talk about the budget and what the heck's going on. We put money in the budget for, um, to hire someone and we probably should talk about that. And the other thing is not to, um, criticize anyone for good intentions and a good result. But I, and this is a new working relationship, but I do think it is important, um, that the commission authorize, you know, actions that are done on behalf of the city as far as budget and contracts and, and that kind of thing. But, you know, it's all turned out well, but it's important. So, um, and I, I think that's it for me.
Mayor, can I come back?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Banks?
My, uh, what I was going to bring up, I said I wait till the next meeting, uh, Commissioner, she mentioned it, so we'll discuss it in the next meeting, about CRA, part-time person.
All right.
I just say, want to get that on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we can put that on the agenda for next month?
Yes, please.
And then I've been working on that. We'll, we'll talk about that in the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none? This meeting is closed.
Thank you. How you cut me off?